Okay, uh, good, good evening everyone. Good to see each of you here tonight, September 2nd. Hope you had a great Labor Day weekend. Hope you ate, ate well and had a good time. Mr. Craig Mau, our city attorney, he's not gonna be with us tonight. Probably the council will cheer on that. You know, uh, sorry, Mr. Craig Mau, wherever you are, but, uh, we hope you're doing well down. I think you're visiting your children in Alabama. So, um, we will try to do our best without our city attorney present tonight. Um, I want, once again, thank everyone. Uh, if anybody needs to use their cellphone, I'd ask you to maybe at least place it on silent while you're in, and then if you need to use it, uh, you certainly step out. Um, I'll tell, I'll tell a little story on this. Uh, I used to play football and, uh, Todd, uh, Steve Mahoney, what I'm looking at in the crowd, this is called a unbalanced formation. And unbalanced formation is when you line up and all of your whole line shifts to the right, and you leave, leave one or two people over here. So, the setup of the room tonight looks like an unbalanced formation. But, but that's, that's okay. Just long as these folks over here feel like they're part of the, the whole ship too, that's good. But, uh, I know he, Steve works hard to put the, uh, room together every Tuesday or Monday. So, thank you, Steve, and, uh, we're going live right now on YouTube. So, anyone's gonna be speaking tonight, make sure you come up to the podium and speak openly and well, and up close to the microphone, and you'll certainly be heard by the audience listening tonight. I think our audiences have been increasing as we go here about city business. So, that's, that's good in terms of people listening in, so we appreciate that. Um, with that being said, for those who can stand, we always like to say our pledge of allegiance. So, if you could, please stand with us. Okay, Heather Woodcox, our city clerk, would you please call the role?
Lucy Ricketts. Jason Kinzer.
Here.
Jason Taylor.
Here.
Joe Davenport.
Here.
Kenneth Powell.
Here.
Trey Kammer.
Here.
Here.
Okay.
Latasha is in route. She had a, yeah, she's, she's coming.
Latasha is in route. When she gets here, we will counter in at that point. So, we have seven members present, so we do have a quorum, and I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, next item of business, the approval of our, of our, um, minutes from our August 4th meeting. So, I'll give you a moment to look over those and see perhaps if anyone has any changes or corrections. I'm sorry, let's, let's move back to four. Um, I'm looking for it. I'm looking for it.
Approval of agenda?
I see, okay, I'm sorry, item four. Okay, uh, the fourth, uh, September 2nd agenda. Let's get approval on that. I have one addition. Uh, Corey Rustneck, who will be giving a director's report, would like to add an item in on his report to declare a piece of equipment tonight as surplus property. So, that will be one addition during Corey's report. Latasha has just entered the room, so she will be, be accounted as one of the council members present. Does anyone else have any additions to the agenda tonight? Or deletions?
Any motion to approve, Mayor?
One, one, uh, quick thing on, uh, 17th city bus. Um, I think Katie, I just passed her. She was, uh, not feeling well, so I'm assuming that we won't have a report for...
Uh, she's, she said, told me today that she'd already spoke, had spoken about the city bus already, Trey, and there's really no need to her further discuss that, so I put Corey in her place.
Okay.
Thank you for that correction though.
All right.
Anyone else have any, uh, additions or corrections, additions to the agenda? Joe, you made a, you made a motion to approve, sir?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second by Trey Kammer. Need for a discussion on the motion? If not, all is in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we also have approval of our minutes, item five from our August 4th meeting. Um, please take those in review and see perhaps if anyone has any, they were a lengthy set of minutes. So, see perhaps if we have any additions or corrections that you're seeing that need to be corrected in our minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor, and then for any discussion, any discussion.
Okay, motion made by Joe Davenport. Would there be a second?
Second.
Second by Lucy Ricketts. Need any further discussion on the motion? If not, all is in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on, item six, city administration, Ms. Cindy Alvano, our finance director. And she has, uh, three separate documents tonight for us, uh, payables, financial report, and our bank balances. Welcome tonight, Cindy.
Thank you. Okay, so the first document will be the check register. Does anybody have any questions related to any of the items listed on the check register?
If, when you're ready, I'll accept a motion to approve the items on the check register.
So moved.
Motion made by Lucy Ricketts, second by Joe Davenport. Need further discussion on the motion? I'll give you time if you need it. I know you're some still looking, so...
Hey Cindy, on the, um, on the Amazon, um, online payment, is that for all departments combined, or?
So, I can put a, a key. Um, so some of the larger payments that we make for all the various departments, you'll see that there are account numbers listed, like the 1-1-0-dash.
Yeah, okay.
And then that third, the second segment in that account number represents the department. But yes, the Amazon pa- payment does cover admin and all various departments.
Okay. Yeah, that would be nice to have a, a code interpreter, you know what I mean? So, we can tell which one was, which department was which.
Like, what's 107?
107 is parks.
I just asked.
That's okay. That's okay. I can go through what all, all of them are if...
Sure. Oh, no, no, no. I just, I just was curious.
Yeah, if you could, uh, for the next meeting, that'd be really nice if we had like 107 par-, you know, just a little cheat sheet at the top or something, that'd be good. I know you know them by heart, but there's no way I'm gonna remember 107 as parks.
Trust me, it took me a while.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further questions on the check register statement? If not, all is in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passing. Okay, Cindy, uh, next, next report.
Okay, the next report is the financial report, uh, with page one being the statement of revenues, which is the money that the city took in for the month of August, approximately 1.8 million for the month. We had the quarter ending, so we had, um, compensation tax revenue that came in, and we had an unexpected, uh, little bump there from Rawlings. They had, um, a bonus that they paid out, so we took in an additional 250,000 in compensation tax from Rawlings this month. Does anybody have any questions on pages two through 10? Those are the various department expenses.
250,000 extra was just from Rawlings?
Correct.
And they just pay 1%, right?
10%.
No, they pay, they pay 1% and then we give the county half of that. Cause we're, that's part of Oldham Reserve agreement, so since they're in Oldham Reserve, we split and divide it evenly.
So, 500,000?
No.
Was their 1% con- but we only got 250?
Well, 200, 1% of, to equate to 250,000, that's about 2.5 million.
No, what, what he's saying, what he's saying is...
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but that would be 10%, so we're looking at 25 million in bonuses, right?
And, and I, I, to be honest, I have no idea what the bonus structure is.
Holy cow, that's...
That's possible.
Wow. All right. That just sounded like a huge number, and I was like, wait a minute.
It is a huge.
Straple eight that out, that's 25 million in bonuses, but good for them, good for us. There you go.
Okay, um, where were you, Cindy?
Uh, we were going on to page two through 10, which is each of the department's expenses. Um, if anybody has any questions on the administrative, there's minimal there, $342 for special appropriations. If anybody has any questions on parks, public works, police, code enforcement, or admin.
Any further questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Joe Davenport.
A second.
Second by Kenneth Powell. Need for a discussion on the motion? If not, all is in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you all. Okay, and last document, Cindy, please.
Uh, the last document is our bank account balance report. Um, at the beginning of the year, from a budget perspective, we not, have not expended anything too outrageously excessive. Um, the one thing that I do want to point out to everyone is down in the investment accounts. So, in the month of July, these are all based on market value. So, this is, these numbers are representative of what the markets are doing. So, last month in July, the markets took kind of a little bit of a downturn, and we experienced a negative in our investment accounts of about 34, $35,000. This month, the month of August, they kind of rebounded a little bit, and now that investment in that fair market value of those investments went up 72,000. So, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that that's based on market value, not based on actual interest arms.
Cindy, the, um, uh, general consensus is that the Fed's gonna cut interest rates pretty soon. Is that gonna affect these accounts, and can we lock in rates before they're cut?
Um, these investments are either in a money market, which stays pretty consistent right around 4%, and the rest of these are in T-bills. So, it, they will be unaffected.
Okay, good.
Okay, once you're ready to make a motion to approve this document, I'll be ready to accept it.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, motion made by Kenneth Powell.
Second.
Second by Joe Davenport. Need further discussion on the motion? If not, all is in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And the other bullet point item under number six, I'm gonna defer that down to item number nine. On the agenda. So, at this time, we're going to review the Republic Services franchise, franchise contract renewal. Um, so I can invite Todd up here from Republic Services if anybody has any questions related to contract renewal for Republic Services.
Actually, it was time for us to, uh, bid the, um, or at least seek, seek renewals from our present contract garbage provider, being Republic. Um, we met with Todd, uh, previously, and then he came back to the full budget committee, uh, meeting. The full budget committee meeting vetted, vetted his, um, his numbers for the upcoming zero to five-year contract. Uh, I feel like the budget committee was very well satisfied with what his numbers looked like. Um, uh, other than a few complaints along the way that we typically expect when you're picking up amount of households in the city that Republic has done for us for the last 20 or so years. Um, we feel like their, uh, increase year to year has been very, very fair. They've always been over backwards. They help us out on many, many free dumpsters, help us with our city cleanup days, providing six, seven, eight dumpsters. They, they've just been a very good company to work with, and, and we, we've sent the, uh, his new quote to the, uh, budget committee. So, anyone on the budget committee, I know Trey is the chair of that committee. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say.
I'm chairing, Mayor.
I'm sorry, sorry, Joe, you're the chair, buddy. So, you go ahead, you go ahead and speak about it. So, so, uh...
I think you said about, we did, uh, I did come to a budget committee meeting, and we had the discussion over it, and, you know, about the percentage for the first few years, and we had, had a discussion over that and the crease up for the, for the years that we've got it done for. So, so anyway, I'm, uh, I've known Todd for years and, uh, Republic, and even when I was mayor, we didn't have any complaints. And when we did, actually, he's retired now, but the guy from Republic would actually come and meet the citizen if, if we needed anything. So, that's kind of unheard of. So, that, that means a lot when, when, when you got someone who can do that, so. But, it's like the mayor said, it's, they've been just great for us. We hadn't had any problems with them at all, so I highly recommend it.
Trey, you have anything to add to that, sir? Were you over at the meeting, weren't you?
Uh, yeah, I, um, we, we did meet on the 14th, and, um, I'll just echo what Joe said. It was a great conversation, and it looks like we got, uh, the adjustment from our meeting.
Yeah.
Um, or the requests, I guess, that came out of our meeting, and so appreciate that. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's been a good partnership on, on that service.
Mr. Todd, career with Republic, anything you'd like to offer to the council about where, where Republic is in the, in the industry? And, um, are we gonna see shiny new trucks and shiny new cans, or what we're gonna see, Mr. Todd?
Well, you know, we do get trucks in periodically. We actually just got a new one in, uh, so you'll be seeing that around town. Uh, echo what Trey said, we've enjoyed our partnership here in La Grange. La Grange is important to Republic Services. Uh, La Grange is important to me. You know, I shared with, uh, the committee and mayor a couple times, um, where the market is right now, and, um, we put our best foot forward, and it's still a pretty solid price for the residents, to be honest with you.
Could you, could you maybe, for the audience's sake, could you some, do you have the rates in front of you, sir? I mean, could you, uh...
For La Grange, or?
For, for La Grange, could you summarize what, what, what our next five years looks like? And where we are today, where we were, are gonna be yesterday, and what the incremental increase that you had to put in to just take care of, uh, you know?
Absolutely. So, currently, the, the residential rate is 1298. Uh, it comes with two trash, uh, two trash containers with that.
Now, that's, uh, that's 1298 for the whole month, that's four weeks pickup, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
4.33 by average.
Okay.
So...
4.33.
Um, you know, over time, uh, La Grange, early on, was getting a 2% adjustment annually. Then it got to 3%. Um, what we call our kegger, right, is what we anticipate our increases on being. We anticipate our internal costs increasing about 5.6% over the next five years. Um, what we came to negotiations was, uh, we will keep it frozen at the 3% uh, for the first two years of the first two increases, and then we'll go just to 4% on years four and five. Um, so what you're looking at, a jump off rate from the increase that we have to do is just 1504 per month. Um, and then recycling, which is optional. Uh, we have about, we have a little over 600 customers here that are doing recycling. That goes to 607 per month. Um, and then our trash for the commercial customers is just 375 for, uh, per cubic yard per month. So, for instance, uh, Mr. Kinzer, what do you have over there, an eight yard of your restaurant?
I was trying to figure it out, because there's taxes involved, and so it's, it's twice a week, and I, yeah, I don't...
I think it's an eight yard, so you'll be looking at like 250, 251 a month. So, I think right now you're probably sitting at about 230 or something like that, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so overall, uh, we are going to five years to make it more in line with the Oldham County contract, and also that protects your pricing a little bit longer. I don't wanna have to come back in in three years and ask for a larger increase, um, you know, due to the market and everything. So, happy to take any questions the council has.
I have, uh, a couple. What, um, and it may be in here, sorry, I'm, I'm just scanning through. Um, what are the options for, um, I think for, uh, for commercial customers, I think, uh, is it? And tell me if I'm wrong, I think it's once a year, once over two years, you can ask for a new dumpster. Uh, so, helping with, um, critters and bugs and that kind of thing, that just after, you know, a year or two of use, uh, for a commercial dumpster, you just kind of get those things around.
So, we do have an exchange rate that you can, that you can add to your monthly rate of like $9, I think is what it is, and you can actually get a new container annually with that.
Okay. And if you don't have that, is there an option for...
You can pay to have that changed out, yes, sir.
Pay one time to have it changed out, okay?
Yes, sir. Or if the container gets a, if the bottom rusts out and you got a hole or something, obviously, we're gonna exchange that out. We don't want garbage juices and all that running out onto the city streets or anything like that.
Right, right. And then as, as council, we're concerned about, you know, rodents and things like that, so... Um, and then what is the option as far as cans and, and, uh, cleaning and, uh, switching those out for residential? Is that, is that an option as well, or they need to clean their own cans?
Clean their own cans, or there are some third parties out there. Um, I know Clean a Can was one of them, and there was somebody here that was at Oldham County Day. I can't remember the name, but he's just getting started.
Yep.
Um, you know, we've, we approached Clean a Can a few years ago to go on partnership, but at the time, he wasn't willing, it was gonna be, it was actually gonna be more than what the garbage rate was to come like twice a month to clean the cans. So...
Wow.
I don't know where they're at these days, cause that was the last time I really had communication with them. They do reach out periodically, but going in partnership, they just don't seem very responsive to that.
How, how, how does the Clean a Can work? Do they pull up from your house and just pour your garbage?
They pull up from your house.
Turn your garbage can upside down and spray it out, or what?
So, they have a truck, um, basically with some grippers on the back that turns it up. You probably sell them, don't you? Kenneth can probably tell you better about it.
Multi-hog.
Turns it upside down, um, and then it power washes from underneath, and that water is supposed to be captured within the truck.
Yeah, but that's some question. Is it captured in the truck?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, Kenneth, Kenneth seems to know about it.
And then Todd, what, Todd, one other question. Um, I know I've gotten, uh, when there's a holiday uh, or a service interruption, uh, we get calls at the restaurant at about 2:00, 3:00 a.m. Is that for all commercial customers, or is that, is that going to residential as well?
So, we don't send those to the residential like that. That's an automated thing that you can turn off online, or if you give me a, if you want me to turn them off, I can...
Well, just not at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, because I didn't know if that was universal for everyone.
You can turn it to just, uh, text, or phone call, or email. So, you have options on that.
Okay.
If you get online. If you need any help, just give me a holler out, I'd be more happy to walk you through it.
Okay. Awesome.
Across from my house, about 4:00 in the morning, they sit over and clang at Eldridge's. Could I get that time moved up to 9:30?
We do that on purpose. We do that on purpose, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay. I thought you, I thought you were doing it, yeah, you were doing that intentionally, telling your driver. Okay.
Mr. Taylor.
Why does he have to hit it three times?
Make sure it's all out.
I was just gonna say in my subdivision, I don't even hear you all anymore, because you got rid of the hydraulic.
No, we saw the hydraulic, it's just a different style. We have, we don't have the side load anymore. We got the bucket, so that arm's not going up as far anymore.
You just kind of, you, you hear the, you hear the, a little bit of clanging of, of the, uh, cart, but that's all you ever hear.
Yeah.
And it, it really is nice, because it was coming through about 4:00. And also, I wanna thank you, and I, I, I thank you personally, but I wanna thank you publicly, um, for Oldham County Day. I know the city work, it, it's in this contract, but for Oldham County Day, you've always worked really well with us finding... It's getting harder to find a place to put...
It's getting harder to find a spot. We'll make it happen. We gotta go multiple smaller dumpsters like we talked about.
Right. Well, but yet, that's all over town, and you don't wanna have to do that. But this year, we asked for one that was not as high.
Yep.
Because our person in charge is kind of short, and it was kind of hard to get the, the bags into it, and you accommodated her well.
Right.
So, we thank you all. Thank you very much.
It's our pleasure.
Okay, and the other bullet point for the audience in the city as well, we will also receive a 3% franchise fee on top of gross, gross revenues. So, that will come back to the city in terms of a 3% fee back to the city based on your gross revenues. Um, so anyway, Cindy, you have anything to add to this actual, uh, agreement?
Yeah, no, I just had a couple of questions on the numbers. On the residential rate, Todd, um, you said it was 1298 now?
Yes, sir.
And so, there's 1504, would that actually...
That's an eight. 1288. I didn't put my glasses on, sorry. Got them on now.
Okay, and it goes to 1504 per month for the residents?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, the 3% for years two and three, is that saying then to people, next year, the 1504 will go up by 3%?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then 3%, 4%, and 4%?
Correct.
Um, is that what normally would have happened this year, from last year? From the 1298? I guess my question is on, on, from 1298 to 1504, it's 15.8% increase. So, what, every year, it's going 3% or 4%, why is it going up 16%?
The cost of doing business now, since we did the last contract, it's just, what we're having to pay our drivers, number one, these days, um, was the biggest influence on that. But, I, I'll give you some examples, um, just in the last few months. So, City of Harrisburg, they're at 2250 for the same service. Um, Henry... Um, Henry County, I know it's a county, and counties are always gonna be a little bit more expensive because of the density, right? But they're at twenty-six fifty. Um, the county went to nineteen thirty-seven, I believe.
Old, Oldham County did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Y'all do a great job. I just wanted to make sure everybody's listening in.
Yeah, it's really just our cost, the cost of spray.
Sees that and knows that, so.
Um, you know, when COVID hit, the, the cheapest increase we got was in our carts, and it was like thirty-five percent increase back in twenty-one, right? Everything else just went through the roof.
Every driver I've met that's been in La Grange, Joe, has been just as polite and, you know, I do wanna compliment the drivers.
I appreciate that, Joe. You know, a thing that a lot of residents probably don't see, and even the commercial customers, um, for the most part, you've had the same core group of drivers for years, right? A lot of them live out here, they care about the community, and they don't wanna see it go away, for sure.
Pretty much early rise, and a lot of times I'm out, you know, when they're picking up, and they never, they never fail to throw up a hand or something.
Give them a water, Joe. They get thirsty. Give them a Gatorade.
They might more than want more than water. Might have to have a little talk with them.
Mr. Taylor, did you have another question? The city had a couple, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, are we still able to request a new can, like, if you have problems with it? The lid's not staying on, or the wheel is falling off, or all that kind of stuff?
The can gets cracked, the lid gets broken, all that, yes, all that stays the same. Y'all still have access to the landfill, all that good stuff.
You personally drop those cans off?
Um, when I need to, sir, yes.
One more question, just because I know we got people watching on, uh, YouTube and that, so, uh, I'm trying to think of some questions that they might have. Um, what, uh, what can people do as far as having a mattress or a piece of furniture or a large, uh, property like that? If they, especially if they're like saying in an apartment complex, what would they do in that situation?
So the apartment complex are considered commercial property, right, because they got a commercial dumpster. Um, I know we've tried to work with them before and tried to get that picked up for them. Um, what, what comes down to a lot of those is the customer calling it in is not on the account, right? And, um, it's not being billed to the city. So a lot of times, those things will go with Stephanie, and she'll end up hollering at me, asking what we can do, and nine out of ten times, it gets taken care of.
I'd, I'd like for you, for the audience's sake, to tell them a good number to call for Republic in event they need to talk to someone with Republic. What would that number be? Would you have that?
Same number it's always been, five oh two, six three eight, nine thousand.
Could you repeat that again?
Five zero two, six three eight, nine thousand.
Okay. Uh, could you maybe speak to the, uh, issue or the matter of them? If they wanna take something to the landfill themselves, they have the ability to do that free of charge, with the exception of what materials?
No construction or demolition debris. So what we classify as household waste, um, would be something other than your regular trash that you're throwing out. It would be something you would be packing up and moving with you, such as a piece of furniture, white good, which is an appliance. Um, anything like that, you can take to the landfill, with the exception, we know that people do do their own flooring and stuff like that. If you will cut up and roll up your carpet, they can either take that to the landfill, or that could be considered a bulk item as well. Up to ten rolls, I think, like, three foot wide rolls.
And your landfill is located where?
It is on, uh, Sofa Road out in Tremble County.
Okay.
So your first exit, take a left, go two point three miles, go right, go another two miles, take a right, it's on your left.
And can they do this on Saturday morning?
Landfill's not open on Saturdays right now, except during a holiday week like this week.
Okay, okay, so it's open, uh,
Seven to four.
Seven to four each day.
You have to have proof of residency or something.
You have to bring in your ID and a water bill.
Water bill.
Okay, right. Okay, all right. Any other further questions for Todd and his, um, renewal that you have before you? And if you're ready, I'll entertain a motion that we accept.
Motion.
Motion made by Jason Kinser. Would it be a second?
A second.
Second by Trey Kammer, any further discussion on the motion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose. Thank you so much, Todd.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, mayor. Thanks, buddy.
Okay, tonight, uh, we also have an update on our health insurance rates, uh, and who's gonna provide our health insurance coverage for our city employees? Um, is Katie here tonight?
No.
Katie, excuse me?
Yeah, no, Katie is not here tonight, so I'll be presenting.
Okay, so are you reporting, Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, if you would, please give the council and the audience a little update on, and background on where we have been with our discussion with Assured, uh, Insurance Partners as to what we wanna do for our city employees in terms of health insurance.
So I am happy to report with a great deal of enthusiasm that we, the city, I do consider us to be very fortunate this year, and that overall, we only had a two point six percent increase in rates. So, um, a lot of that attributes to our, our claim status. So we, I gotta throw out kudos and credits to all of those who are on our health insurance plans, that you are a big, um, participant and component as to why our rates have remained lower than normal. So thank you for that. I thank all the employees. Um, secondly, I know one of the questions, um, that came through personnel and that also came through budget in that we, I budgeted for a thirty percent increase. So there were some different dynamics that came about that led me to believe that it was going to be a thirty percent increase and what that would look like from a budgeted perspective. And where we landed, um, going through the Personnel Committee, and I can let Lucy speak a little bit to that if she would like. Um, but where we landed, um, through the Personnel Committee and through the financial recommendation and discussions with HR and with mayor, is that we are going to continue with the ten percent, ninety percent, premium split between employees and the city. So in doing so, what we will see over the course of the next year is an overall, in that one line item, we will be slightly over budgeted by around thirteen thousand dollars. So I think, given the fact that, you know, we, we remain competitive from an employer perspective, um, we value our employees and we wanna have the most competitive benefit package that we can, I think thirteen thousand dollars is a, is a pretty minimal amount to, to pay for that.
Hey, Cindy, so, um, uh, forgive me for being a dummy, you lost me there. So you, you expected a thirty percent increase, it was only a two and a half percent increase, but, but yet we're adding thirteen thousand to the budget, how, that, that's where I got lost.
So there's a lot of different dynamics that go into that, which I, I don't have enough time to really dive into the budget as to what the dynamics and the shift in that was. But I can tell you that it was, I, I did not anticipate a ten percent, ninety percent split, just simply because I thought the increase in premiums were gonna be essentially astronomical.
Gotcha.
So, but that was just, that was my best take, the information that I had at the time in preparing the budget.
Okay. What, uh, just out of curiosity, what did you think was the best guess for the split? What was your guessman on that for budgeting purposes?
For budgeting purposes, I used twenty eighty.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So that is, um, page one in terms of the financial, uh, benefit summary. And then page two that I provided was just simply, um, how much it breaks down by each level. Uh, we have four categories for our health insurance. We have either just a single employee, employee spouse, employee child, and family. And what each category, um, costs an employee annually, what the renewal will cost each employee annually, what the city cost is annually, and what the renewal cost is annually. And some of you might ask, um, because I questioned it when I did this, um, page one, where it shows that there's a thirteen thousand dollar, um, increase, and page two shows a twenty-four thousand dollar increase, again, with our renewal period, July, August, and September, um, since we were on a thirteen, uh, fourteen month, I believe, renewal period. So July, August, and September will be at our old rates, and the renewal rates do not go into effect until October. So we will have nine months on our budget at the, at the renewal rate. Does anybody have any questions related to employee health insurance benefits, cost or otherwise?
Cindy, I'm still lost on the math. So if you, if you budgeted for a thirty percent increase and the city paying eighty percent of that thirty percent increase, so take a thou, say a thousand dollars, just to make it easy. Thousand dollars was what the rate was. Uh, a two and a half percent increase would make that a thousand twenty-five, and eighty percent of that, that the city would pay would be nine twenty-two fifty. I'm sorry, ninety percent of that is nine twenty-two fifty.
Yeah. Eighty percent of it's eight hundred.
Yeah, if you expected a thirty percent increase, but the city was only gonna pay eighty for that, so a thirty percent increase would make that thousand thirteen hundred, and eighty percent of that is a thousand and forty, is what we were expecting to pay. But instead, we're only paying nine twenty-two fifty, because we're paying ninety percent of the thousand twenty-five instead of eighty percent of the thirteen hundred. So it, it seems like we're paying less, we're paying, but the difference between, you know, if it was a thousand dollars and between nine twenty-two fifty and a thousand forty, uh, it's a pretty good, pretty good difference there, but yet, you, and you had budgeted for the higher number, but yet, we're in, we're having to add thirteen thousand on.
Yeah, and, and like I said, if.
The math stopped mathin' for me there.
No, and I can show you the spreadsheet, Jason, later, but there are some additional anomalies that went into those numbers for the budget. Um, the math, I mean, math doesn't lie. So when I looked at the rates based on what we were paying, it showed that the employee portion was at sixteen percent. So what I wasn't aware at the time was that it had been a pre-negotiated, non-changing rate of ninety and ten percent.
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yep, so the budget was built on a little bit different mix of premium pays.
Okay.
As well.
So that would explain why it's very close and the, the difference is thirteen thousand because of that sixteen versus. Okay, that makes a lot more sense than, thank you.
Yep, okay.
What about the hospital indemnity? The hospital?
Oh, correct, okay. So another, another item that almost makes us bottom line neutral is that, um, we are going to discontinue offering, um, as a, as a benefit to the employees, the hospital indemnity plan. Um, it will become an option that employees can pay an additional premium to carry that coverage. Um, but that will save the city about fourteen and a half to fifteen thousand dollars a year. And if anybody, does, does anybody, would anybody like for me to explain what the ho- hospital indemnity policy would have covered? Yeah, okay. So the hospital indemnity plan was an adjunct plan that allowed for anybody that if you had certain covered services, let's say, um, whether you had a same-day surgery or an admitted surgery, or if you had a broken arm or a broken leg, or you had a fifty percent disability or a hundred, hundred percent disability, there was a flat rate that this hospital indemnity plan would reimburse you for. So like if you had a broken finger, for example, let's just say, you could make, you could file a claim and it would pay you a hundred dollars. So the thought or the theory behind having that plan was at the time when the HRA did not cover certain items, that the hospital indemnity, if you had a major illness or injury, that it would pick up and pay for that and help you cover your copay or deductible. And since we have, um, our HRA coverage, we don't need that additional coverage, so it's just kind of double dipped. Okay.
Good catch, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, our single, single coverage gets a seven thousand dollar HRA and our family gets fourteen thousand. HRA backup.
Yes, correct. So we ask respectfully that council approve our health insurance benefit package, um, for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
You, you mentioned, I guess, shortfall of like thirteen thousand, seven forty-six, it's written in red on your sheet here. But then you also just mentioned the reverse of fourteen thousand approximately on the indemnity plan. So are you saying essentially that it's a wash from what was previously approved in terms of how it affects our budget for this upcoming year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
About net neutral.
And from the personnel point of view, we looked at it as supporting our personnel and showing them that if we can, we will. There may be a time when we can't pay as much, but at this point, we can and we wanna continue that if it's possible.
Correct.
And we value them.
Yes, and it's, and it's much appreciative.
Yeah.
I know I speak on behalf of a lot of the employees who had input, um, and concerns when we were having these discussions, so I know that each and every employee appreciates it, and appreciates our coverage.
There, I'm gonna speak up on this. There was some discussion in our, in our deliberations, and I want everyone to know this, but there were some discussions that, I don't know how private enterprise does it, how other cities do it, how, how companies do it, but if you look at your single policy compared to your family, there's a seventeen thousand dollar differential between a single person working for the city and a, and a family plan. Uh, there were some arguments somewhat presented and made, and maybe, um, I think we need to set, set the tone here tonight as we move forward. Um, I think the city's gonna do everything they can to provide the best health insurance to, to whatever the employee needs. However, a single person somewhat felt, if I'm working here and I'm only costing the city twelve thousand a year, but a family's costing them right at thirty thousand, what kind of, um, what kinda, should I get a incremental bump, uh, based on the fact that I'm, you know, costing the city seventeen thousand dollars less a year? I heard, I heard some of that discussed, and, and we didn't go there, we didn't go there. That's not to say we will, we won't. I think, I think, I'm gonna say, everything next year has to come under review. And, you know, as to point, this year, we can handle it, but each year in the future, you don't know that we can, especially if we get a thirty or forty percent bump that we were anticipating this year, but we didn't get it, but, but, and.
And it's coming.
But, but it may be coming, but I know, um, county government, you know, county government, they, they, they pay for a single policy. It's, that's, that's what they do, single. But we do much, much better than that, but I just wanna set the tone that down the road, we may have to look at some of these percentages between what, what we're doing, what we're not doing. I know, I know there's folks sitting here tonight says, uh, what are you saying, mayor? I'm, I'm saying the fact we gotta continue to look at these things because we, we were determined this year not to cut those benefits at all, period, and we didn't.
Correct.
But, but there has, there will be the discussion someday, how we're gonna deal with the family policy to the single person and things like that, because I think all the council people can see that there's a seventeen thousand dollar differential of, of what's getting provided to an employee.
That is correct. So, so the, the monetary value to a single person, um, for the health insurance company is, health insurance coverage is twelve thousand dollars, and the value to, um, your employee spouse, your employee child, and all the way up to family is close to twenty-five to thirty thousand. So it's more than double that we pay for anybody other than a single employee.
And, and I think mayor makes a good point. Um, there may be, for example, married couples with a family, and if there's, uh, an incentive, uh, to kinda even it out, uh, you know what I mean? Where the person that's single that doesn't have a family, they're not costing the city as much, so maybe they get, I, I don't know, an extra thousand dollar bump toward whatever, um, toward that. toward that. So if you're a married couple, and say, the, the wife works for the city and the husband works for the county, maybe they want to go with the husband's insurance on the county versus the city, and take that thousand dollar bump versus just, versus just taking the hit to the city, so.
Right. And, and there are many ideas that, that we came up with for, for future discussion.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, um, everyone comfortable with what we have here tonight? If we are, please, I'll entertain a motion that we accept what we have for you in terms of our health insurance coverage.
I'll make a motion.
Latasha makes the motion?
I'll second, but I wanted to say everybody to be aware that's paying attention and whatever, this, this does not affect the city council members as a city employee. So we're not like voting on our own health insurance, just so people know that.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Laura, Latasha makes the motion, who's seconded it?
I second.
Seconded by Jason Taylor, any further discussion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Cindy. Okay, I think you're up again.
Yep.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'm staying up here, you guys are going to get tired of looking at me.
This is the Cindy Show tonight.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, could I be excused just for a second? I've got something in my eye, and it's driving me nuts.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, you take right off. We need to call nine-one-one? Okay. What we need?
I was just having Steve look to see if there was any saline or I wash stuff in the, in our first aid kit. And we do. I want to let everybody know, just-
You need me to hold him down, Steve?
Just as, just as, just as a shout out, Cintas is the company that we, that we utilize to fill our first aid box, and they do a phenomenal job of doing it. They provide us with just the basic necessities of what we need for our first aid kit without overcharging us and without over-supplying us, so thankful for that.
Okay, Cindy, you're up on-
You want me to continue, or you want me to wait for Kenny to come back?
No, go ahead.
Okay, all right. So, next item up is my request for the financial department to add another position to the staff. So this person would be a financial accountant, reporting directly to me. And the top five reasons, I, I just put five reasons, top five reasons that I feel that we need this additional person. One is for, and, and I'll get into any questions that you have later, but, and these are in no way ranked in number order. But one of the top five reasons is for audit assistance and catch-up. Another reason is managing and assisting in the accounting day-to-day. Accounts payable, paying the bills, and credit card allocations to all the departments. Three, we hope that this position eventually will take over all the payroll processing benefits and paying payroll taxes. Number four, this is in an extreme effort to free up Heather, our city clerk, to focus more on her duties and the requirements of the job of the city clerk. Reason being, Heather currently assists me on a part-time basis doing some of the accounting stuff, and that was not originally part of her original job description. So we want to put her back where she needs to focus her efforts. And number five, this is, I, I actually should say that this is probably the number one quality of life. That it may be some point in time that we can limit it to the number of hours, meaning eight hours, nine hours a day, as opposed to ten, eleven, twelve hours a day. We're putting in a lot of time, and we're making, we're making strides, we're making, we're meeting our challenges, we're meeting our time, the goals that we have set for ourselves. But as the city continues to grow, as ordinances increase, compliance increases, regulations, there's just a lot more work to bring the financial department to a level that a city of this size needs. So I'm asking the city council for their approval to approve an additional person to the financial staff.
Katie, been doing payroll?
Katie currently does payroll and does benefits. And when I say benefits, you know, from a payroll perspective, is where, is where we take that over and reconcile that to our monthly bills and whatnot. Payroll kind of went with Katie as, as a secondary when we lost our previous city clerk, so that wasn't originally one of her original job duties. But at some point, our first and foremost priority, obviously, is audits and to get caught up. But that's eventually where we look for this position to go down the road, to take on some of that. The discussion with this position did go through the Personnel Committee. It also went through the Budget Committee in terms of how we can financially work this into the budget. So both of those committees with, approved with their recommendations to move forward. So if anybody has any questions, I will, I will take any questions.
What, Cindy, you said Katie's currently doing the payroll and stuff. Does she have the bachelor's degree in accounting finance?
She does not.
So how firm are we on that bachelor's degree? If someone has a two-year degree and have been doing bookkeeping for a while, is that maybe?
It's, it's a bachelor's degree or equivalent work experience.
Oh, oh, okay.
It should say that.
Oh, okay, yep, it does, I just didn't finish to the end. Okay.
Cindy, how, how are you proposing this be dealt with in the budget? Normally, if we amend a budget, you've got a first and second reading, but you're, I guess you're saying shifting some things around that are already in the budget? So that this is not actually going to be a new expense for the city, is that what you're suggesting?
That's where, that's what we're targeting. I don't want anybody to have any misconceptions that anything that we put in the budget wasn't what we had anticipated, but with the request for this additional position, we may just have to cut back on a few things to, to make this item, item financially and fiscally work.
I have a question too, the fifty to, the salary range of fifty to seventy, what is, what is that total compensation, including health insurance, life insurance, paid time off, all that jazz?
So that's, so that's base salary, and any PTO time would be included in, already included in that salary, so the, so the total compensation package, health insurance, dental and vision would be on top of that, and retirement.
So we're looking at potentially over a hundred thousand? With retirement and, and if they have a family?
If we're on the lower side, no, if we're on the higher side, potentially.
Okay.
So Cindy, I know that you're working really hard to catch up on audits. And a lot of your time is spent doing that.
I'd say eighty-five to ninety percent of my time.
So once that happens, are we still going to have a need for a person in this position?
Yes. And, yes, because Heather will no longer be supporting the financial department, so where Heather's duties, you know, managing the payables and the credit card payments and, and whatnot, all financial work and responsibilities will come from Heather and go to this other person.
And so what are your responsibilities once the audits are caught up? I know you're very busy with those now, so what will your responsibilities be once those audits are caught up?
So, right now, in addition to catching up the audits, I financially make sure that every, all the transactions are coded correctly. I review the financial statements every month, I do an analysis between actual and budget. So I wouldn't necessarily do the accounts payable day-to-day transactions. But I've got budgeting benefits, there's always some analysis that people are wanting me to take a look at, for example. Chief always wants me to look, you know, to make sure that we're in line with his salaries and benefits from, for his department. Corey has me look at stuff for his department to make sure that it's financially and fiscally in line. Lot of, lot of the stuff this year went towards budgets, but there's always going to be, there's going to be year-end work that needs to be done. Accruals, both from receivables and payables perspective. It'll be a lot more high-level financial review and entering those accounting transactions.
Also, we're also getting much more involved in the operation of the golf course financially through their accounting and inter, interaction between yourself and what's taking place at the golf course.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to get more, we're trying to get more and more involved in the golf course. Not been able to do that as much as I would like from a city perspective, but that's just a, that's just a time restriction. Yep.
Cindy, just to put this out here, have we considered maybe a, a more frugal option might be getting Heather an assistant or a backup? Or duplicating Heather's role, or a similar role that's not a hundred thousand dollar total compensation package? Is that something that we looked at?
Um, I guess I'm not sure what exactly you're, you're requesting. Because Heather, Heather, Heather's role currently today is kind of twofold. And maybe even more than twofold, it might be threefold, fourfold, in terms of what she does.
Why don't we duplicate Heather instead of duplicating you?
Because there's, there's a lot more that needs to be done in the financial department than what's getting currently done today.
Okay, and I'm not saying you made a bad decision, I just want to know if that was something to put that-
I truly feel that for a city this size, we're, we're just doing the bare minimum. And, and to me, that's not acceptable. So we need somebody to more evenly actually spend some more time analyzing what we're doing, and to be able to proactively answer these questions. From an analysis perspective, you know, when somebody comes and says, I want to, I want to cut this, or I want to add that. You know, this year I spent, you know, two and a half months trying to determine where we were with the compensation tax. So, you know, anytime the city council wants to increase something, add something new, decrease something, I mean, that's a significant amount of analysis that I need to go through to give all the different scenarios that are available in order to give advice. So I know that a lot of that poten- excuse me, potentially, has or has not been done in the past, but that's where I envision this city and this council going forward. Is to need the support in that, not just to say, well, we need to cut this tax, or we need to add this tax, or increase that tax. We need to have the financial support behind it.
It's, it's, it's tough, really, and Cindy, when she needs documents, when she needs materials, and, and they're basically rebuilding the database from ground zero in terms of the financial accounting and the financial statements. Cindy got to the point with with our software producer, Milik, and said, we just got to, we just got to, you know, do away with the whole, whole situation, start afresh. And Heather has tried to have been providing Cindy that information, Jason, and Jason, both of you, and everyone else, but, but the time that it takes for Heather to be researching tax records, getting ready to send out all the tax bills, working with Ponem to, to make sure all the tax, tax bills are accurate. Heather having been to city clerk convention a few weeks ago, and hearing about for three or four days of what city clerks across the state are doing that we're not even diving into yet, it just opened her eyes to what we're not in compliance with in many areas, so the whole time that Heather is either helping a council person register to go to a convention, booking a hotel room, one thing after another, she gets drawn away from Cindy's attention, and it just, it's frustrating that Cindy we're, we're basically three audits behind, and just have, have to constant, constant dedication to what Cindy is talking about, and it's, it's hard for Heather to offer that.
How much money are we losing every year by not being up to date on the audits?
Well, we're not losing-
We're not losing anything.
We just don't get it.
Because we will, we, we will eventually get the federal funding that is earmarked for us.
Oh.
So we're not losing it.
Oh, it'll be paid retro.
We just can't get it.
It's just deferred until our audits are finalized.
How far behind are we still on the audits?
June of twenty-five officially puts us, unfortunately, behind three years. And I just want to add to this, when I say three years, October thirteenth, and I, and I wanted to bring this up because I had previously indicated to Jason Taylor that our auditor would be here in October to present the report. Unfortunately, due to a scheduling conflict on his part, because city school districts, their year-end is June thirtieth, so unfortunately, he wasn't able to schedule anything sooner. He will be onsite here October thirteenth to do his audit field work. And that is a date that I am not willing to change. I am not going to cancel, and I am not going to reschedule come heck or high water. And with that said, he probably will not have the final audit report prepared and ready for council presentation until December.
And we talk about, you talk about the funds, the city gets municipal road aid from the State Transportation Cabinet monthly. It averages about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars a month. That's the money we're actually talking about, and basically, Corey uses that money for road paving, things like that, but, and many things in the road department area, but we, we are very, very capable of moving money to, to that category to fund Corey's projects. And the rural municipal aid department up in Frankfurt, they're keeping track of it, we know exactly to the penny what they owe us to this date, and they agree with it. It's just that the department, local government, has a, has a rule that if you're in, there are other cities in Kentucky as well in this type of situation. And I continue to apologize to everyone that this situation got to the point that a couple of years ago, or going on two years, that we just had to do something differently, go a different pathway, and that's when we sought out a financial director, and that's what we're trying to climb out of, is that situation.
And we are gaining ground. Please don't misunderstand, we, we, we are gaining ground. Just because we had to recreate the database and, and recreate all the transactions day over day, month over month, it, it is, it is a big effort.
Are you able to work on those audits every day?
Not, no, not every day, I am not.
On, and I, I guess my question is, is if we're three years behind, how long is it going to take for you to get caught up even with this person? And would it make more sense for us to hire that out to an outside firm to get those audits caught up quicker?
It will cost you twice as much, if not more.
Have we checked that?
I know for a fact. Because I know what they charge. I've, I've, I've been there, I've, I've done it.
How long would it take them to, to catch up three years, though?
Part of the problem is getting, they still need to get the information from us in order to do it. So now you've got our time on the front end, and then their time on the back end, so you're not really gaining anything. So you hire a person that's going to be sitting right next to me, right next to Heather, that can work on this every day, they ask a question, that also has a job to do once we are caught up. And, and I hate to say it, I have been here almost a year. And the first three and a half to four months that I was here, we were trying to determine what the best path was to take, to get us out of this predicament, and now that we have found that, we are moving much quicker than what I had hoped in the, in the beginning, but still, I don't have a hundred percent of my time to dedicate towards doing it every single day, nor does, nor does Heather.
So would you, would you say that hiring this person to do this every day, that they could get three years caught up in a year, a year and a half?
I, I would say probably a year.
Would that include the coming year in addition to that, because then you'll be at four years and not three years?
That additional year for twenty-five, twenty-six, that's, I mean, I'm still going to be available. I mean, I'm not going to say that I'm not going to help, because I will still need to help. help, but an additional person will help extremely a lot, so that they can sit there and just do, the majority of their time will be spent helping us to catch up and put in transactions.
Were we able to utilize Beth when we had talked about that?
We did some, Beth was, Beth was very helpful, but knowing that, you know, she does belong to Cory, to another department, she serves another function, that, you know, we didn't feel that we could keep her on indefinitely, and what we needed her to do was just sort of freeing up some, some of Heather's time, which did allow Heather to help me get to a position where hopefully we're going to have everything wrapped up for Kevin on October 13th. So, had Beth not been here, we would probably still be in a little bit of a predicament. So, thanks Cory.
Cindy, I, I certainly appreciate the city's efforts to, you know, improve audits and our financial bookkeeping, I don't oppose this idea, but I wondered, I'm just wondering if it would be helpful for the council, it certainly would be helpful to me to kind of have an idea how this affects our budget, you know, if we're shifting things around, because that can affect other budgets, other, other people's revenues and expenditures.
On that, on that issue, Jason, when you say affecting on the budget, this was just an unanticipated expenditure at the beginning of the budget. You know, when you're, when you're operating the city, and, and to the degree that we feel like we have good financial standing, I don't think, yes, would it have been better to have it placed in the budget for July 1 reading, it wasn't, because it wasn't anticipated at times. So, I appreciate your fact, where's the money coming from, but, but you, you know as well as I do, we're carrying over and carrying forward each year a good cash balance reserve. So, it's, it's like, for example, if, if some, one of you came up with an idea unanticipated that a building were to come up for sale in La Grange, you'd say, oh, we need that structure. We would, we would look at the stability of the city, we'd look at our cash reserves, and we would understand it wasn't in the budget, but it's something we can't pass up. We did that in this last fiscal year with Maury Parkinson property in Springs Park. We felt it was something that abutted our park, we felt it was two and a half acres that would work well with Springs Park, so it wasn't in the budget, it wasn't anticipated, but we went ahead and moved on it because we felt it was an opportunity to do something that we needed to do in relation to Springs Park, so we gave Mr. Parkinson $350,000, and that was unanticipated. So, I appreciate your concern, where's the money coming from, but I, I feel like with the ability to move money in, from our reserve account into this category, Jason, once Cindy determines how much that is, aside from the other line items that we could save from, I think we'll be fine. You know, there's, there's, there's not an issue that we don't have the money, okay? So, so-
Yeah.
I know, I know, I see other cities, other counties operating, and they're amending budgets basically every month to, to take in account things that were unprojected, unforeseen, and they do this, so I just want the council and the audience and everyone to feel that it's just a matter of, of taking some, some over and above cash reserves that we could move into this category, and plus possibly pull from other categories, too.
Right, correct, thank you.
And, and the one thing that I foresee, I see a positive point out of this is, once he's finished, or he or she, whatever, they are finished with help with getting that, that done, then they can take over what Katie does, relieve some from her, and therefore, they will, there will be more work for them to do, and as we grow.
Yeah, there'll be trickle down effects and impacts to, favorable impacts to other people as well.
Well, it, from not being here, there seems to be a thing, we get a department head, and then all of a sudden they need an assistant, and their assistant needs an assistant, and then, well, we got to have this over here, and we got to hire this person, and okay, all right, so we hire this person, and then, well, they need an assistant, and then, they need an assistant. I understand that this is needed, but it, it's, it seems to be a trend that I'd like to hopefully stop at this point.
I, I don't, I don't, well, been, been around somewhat of a long time, but I go back to different mayors and different administrations, Jason, and seems like to me, as long as I can remember, this city honestly has had about, had about the same administrative employees, whether it was a $3 million budget, a 5 million, or a 15 million. We've always had about six, six or seven folks over here, but yet we've, we've increased the operations of the city probably five times in the, from the day we had six with a $3 million budget, we still got six with a 15 or $19 million expenditure budget. So, there's a lot more transactions being conducted today, but yet I still think the personnel across the hall has been basically the same from 15 years ago. You know what I'm saying? Because I recall, I recall who, who the folks were.
Yeah.
And I know who they were.
Yeah.
And they worked, they worked for Elsie, they worked for Joe, they worked for Bill Lamline-
Yeah.
And stuff like that, so it's not to say that we've really enlarged the workforce here at the city, in my opinion, over the last 15 or 20 years.
And one of the things that we're doing too, Jason, is that, you know, when I, when I started, Heather was my financial help. She wasn't the city clerk. So, when Heather moved into the role of city clerk, I panicked. So, I panicked not only from, you know, where's my help going, but I also saw what Heather was going to need to do. I'm like, you know, reading through all the responsibilities and some of what Heather was doing, you know, to get prepared to go to these conferences, and Mayor is correct, I mean, this city needs a city clerk to bring this, this city to the next level.
I remember a time when I was first on council, that we had a city clerk and a treasurer. That was it.
And how many, and how many years ago was that, Lucy?
About 25 years ago.
Well, and I was thinking of population growth, you know, in terms of population growth, but I hadn't considered that your position because of, of financial growth has changed quite a bit, because of, because of the size of the budget and that kind of stuff, so that, that, that makes sense.
And just to add to that, they were having fits with the computer program at that time. So this isn't something that is new, is the fact that the people, the city clerk and all that, it was, it was a very difficult job with a program that was not completely understood.
Well, and we still have those problems.
And I'm not blaming them.
Okay, so, if anybody doesn't have any more questions, I respectfully request that the council to entertain my request.
Okay, you've heard our financial director's presentation, so anyone willing to step up and help assist her in her request tonight?
I will, so move.
A motion made by Lucy Ricketts, second by Joe Davison, board. Any final discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to say, I know what goes on, I mean, we're talking about budgets and all that, I, I think my last budget was like 8 million, and, you know, now we're looking at 15 and whatever, and I know as, when Cindy stepped into this position, there was a lot of reconciling to do, and I, you know, and so, with all that on, on her shoulders, and to get to where we are today with financials, and we're still, and we're still not there, there, because we were so far behind with it, that, so I, I don't have a problem with having somebody to come in and help Cindy with that.
Just out of curiosity, who makes the, I know we have a salary range in there, who makes the decision on the, where we land on that, whether is this person worth the absolute top, or is this person a pretty good deal at the bottom? Who makes that decision?
So ranges are always going to be, be based on experience and qualifications that they bring to the table.
Okay.
Where's that going to be advertised in?
Excuse me?
Where are you going to advertise that? Is that-
It will, it will-
Indeed, or somewhere?
It'll go on Indeed, we have advertised internally, if anybody has any other recommendations, or anybody that would, hopefully if, if the council is unanimous, if anybody has any recommendations or suggestions, open to.
Okay, we, we do have a motion, a second, do we have any further discussion, or we ready to take the vote on the motion? Anyone else have anything further? Okay, we have a motion, a second, always in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
If you want opposed? Okay, thank, thank, thanks so much to the city council for supporting Cindy.
Thank you.
I was just thinking here that, that I think Cindy would like to take maybe vacation this summer, she hadn't got, she hasn't gotten one yet, but I'm, I'm sure if she does take one, she's going to say, what's going to happen this week while I'm gone, so, as she said, maybe would cause less stress on herself, and just try to help her out in, in her needs. Let's keep moving, folks, looks like to me we're up to public comment, so this is an opportunity for anyone wishing to address the, the council, you have up to four minutes, we'll, we'll extend it, if, if we like what you're saying, we'll cancel it if we don't, but, but welcome Kevin Jeffries, magistrate of Oldham County Government.
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you for having me tonight.
Yes, sir.
City Council, just, just a couple of things real quick, we had fiscal court today, just wanted to pass along some thoughts and prayers for Larry Brannon, he was, Jay McDowell was our media guy for a long time, he has moved to West Virginia, and Larry had come in, he'd retired from Southern Seminary and kind of doing video stuff and whatever, and last Thursday, I think, he had some kind of medical issue and took to the hospital, and anyway, they put him in ICU, and he passed away on Saturday. So, just keep his wife Barbara and their two sons and their thoughts and prayers, I would, so, I wonder, so, you hated him.
I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I was there today a couple of weeks ago when Jay had his retirement-
Yes.
-party, and Larry was sitting right there talking to us on how he was going to-
Right.
-carry on with Jay's, wasn't going to be able to do what Jay did, but he's going to try.
Right.
I'll be darned, that's, that's sad to hear, sorry to hear that, Kevin.
Yes, way on Saturday, so, and I brought with me tonight and gave everybody a copy of the, for KYTC, the realignment of Highway 53, and they have made their decision on which option, they have proposed three options to go from Zalesmith out to Hannah Road, south on 53, and so they have chosen option one, which basically goes, starts at Zalesmith, and goes so that, out in front of the golf course, and sees the pub and grill, and then on over to Ballardsville, and when it gets to Ballardsville, it'll go behind the new Ballardsville Baptist Church, and cut through the property there that Walt Shum bought, Middlebrook subdivision, and then it'll circle in behind Ballardsville and come out there in the curve at Hannah Road, which is 1818. So, just, it's still going to be probably a couple of years before they'll start on the actual project, you know, moving dirt or whatever, they, they put a, now that they've chosen which option they're going to pursue, then they've got to put it out for design, and they've got to, you know, look about moving utilities and, and all of that, so it's a, you know, quite an involved process to get to construction, but it'll probably be '27 before they actually start construction, so just wanted to pass that on.
The alignment, what, what's, what's the alignment look like there in the, what I'll refer to as the Joe Clark curve? Where, where's the road going to be at that point?
Well, it's gonna, there's, it'll probably move to the right and go up that hill, it'll take that, that hill off there, there's a house that's been built, so there's probably a house there that will have to be taken or whatever, bought out.
The new house?
They're going to straighten that, you know, straighten it out, and take that curve out, that pretty, you know, curve there at Joe Clark's, and take it on straight up the hill there, but they'll, you know, they'll take those, those hit that hill and, and kind of cut it back or whatever, so it won't be, you know, very steep.
What, I'll say this publicly, and Mrs. Wheezy Gaines, I mean, you know, she may be listening tonight, but she's very concerned about the line that they chose, what, what's, what, why would she have those concerns, you think?
Well, it'll take some of her property, I mean, they'll have to move, you know, we're going to move the road probably to the west.
East, she's on the east side of 53.
Well, she's got, I think some, she's got, yeah, she just has some property on the east, and I think on the west side, too, of there in the curve, you know, just past Joe Clark's, so, you know, she will be affected, there's some properties there, you know, behind, you know, where they're going to go through Middlebrook, the Middlebrook subdivision was approved, and it's going to be built with, you know, knowing that this realigned 53 was going to go through that property, so, you know, that's been accounted for, but there's some properties there on, towards Hannah Road that'll be affected, that, you know, that it'll go through.
Where's the, where's the new property that Walt, that Walt Shum bought? If you're coming, I'm trying to envision this, when you go around the curve there at Joe Clark's, and you're heading towards Ballardsville.
It's right in the middle of Ballardsville, if you're, if you're, when you go, yeah, he's got the man there, but it's, it's right in front of the garage, where Arnold's Garage used to be.
Yep.
That's where the entrance is, a veterinarian owned that farm there.
Yep.
And so, that's, that's the property that Walt Shum bought, and they're putting several homes, 13, 15, 18 homes in that area.
So it's going to go behind that property?
Yes. The, one of the other options they had was to go right through down 53 and, and basically take out Ballardsville, there would have been nothing left of downtown Ballardsville if they would have gone that route, but they, you know, they, that wasn't going to work, so they are, you know, everybody's going to be affected, but, you know, and it's a state highway, so KYTC is the controlling entity on this, but I just wanted to bring you all up to date on what the plans were.
When it goes behind the new Ballardsville church, is it going to go behind the activity center?
Yes, yes, that's, I think that's the plan right there. So, there's probably a couple of homes that, that will be affected, you know, that will have to be bought out or whatever, I believe, but, you know, they, they haven't got that, you know, the alignment, you know, complete yet, they've got to look at, you know, all of the, whose property will be affected, and, and they've got to move utilities and, and that kind of thing, so it's, you know, it's going to be another couple of year process.
Kevin, I'd seen kind of the, the same, the same thing that Mayor was talking about, I'd seen a couple of people online, and they felt like this was the most aggressive disruptive option that they picked, but if it, if it prevents-
The most aggressive option would have been the option, I think that was option two, they would have taken it right, basically where 53 is now, but they would have had to widen, and, you know, going through Ballardsville, there's not much room to widen, I mean, people's homes are sitting right on the, on 53, so-
Gotcha.
They would have basically taken everybody's house, and, and Don Adams' garage, and, you know, everything down through Ballardsville, so-
Okay.
That would have been the most, I think, the most disruptive.
Okay.
Do you, do you know who voted?
Does anybody have any other questions?
Do you know who voted?
I know Gavin this time, about 14 years ago, and I was going to meetings and, I never thought, I never said this far down the road.
Do you know, do you know who voted on the options? I know that there was some presentations, but, I mean, we, we didn't vote on them, just to make that clear.
Well, they did take, you know, they had a survey, and supposedly, and it's outlined in here, that 47% of the surveys they got back was supportive of option one. Now, you know, it's, it's, and it depends on whose property you're, you know, what property they're going through and that kind of thing, so, but KYTC is, is the entity that, you know, that decided, now, I don't know, you know, exactly who, who the persons were, but, you know, KYTC is the one that, that has the, had the final say on this, so-
Okay.
Because it is a state highway.
Kevin, do you know the other, do you know the other two percentages, the 47% on option one, do you know what two and three got?
I don't, I don't, I'm not in front of the here, but, all right.
What about your hazardous waste, do y'all have that coming up, or as far as paints and everything, is that coming up?
Yes, it's in October, I don't have the date right front of race weekend, yeah, I, I'll find out, Mayor, incidentally.
Okay.
All right.
All right, buddy, thank you, Kevin, appreciate you coming.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, who would like to go next on public comment?
Good evening.
I just wanted to take-
I just wanted to give some kudos and talk about the project on fourth. Um, I know it's been a nightmare for some of the residents that are replacing the, the main sewer line, um, which has caused traffic in the alley and just a lot of disruption. But through it all, uh, Scott Treese has taken my phone calls. I've called him probably fifty times and whenever there was an issue, he immediately solved it. Even today, they were working on a small section of relining and had it shut down to one lane with no flagger. There was almost an accident. Scott was out there immediately getting the flagger. I called Cory the other day and, um, when they repaved, they're gonna take care of the speed bump. That is no longer a speed bump right past Oak Leaf. Um, but just, I mean, it's been a lot, uh, but through it all, Scott, I just had to give him kudos for doing a good job. Um, and then I guess asking, I don't know if this is a Scott question, um, but some of the residents are concerned with, and I don't know if like, as I said, if Scott would be in charge of enforcing this or if the city could, but a lot of yards were tore up, a lot of driveways were tore up. Um, the city's contract with Louisville paving, they're gonna repave the road next week. But then the driveways are gonna be done later. We're not sure when by somebody else. But one of the main things is people's yards. They just threw, uh, seed down and straw down and they didn't grade. So like everything is, um, a mess. And then Kelly Simpson couldn't be here tonight, but I put her bringing up, you know, Bobby passed away. But there was a memorial tree in his front yard for his son Cory and they did their best, um, not to take it out, but it looks like it might not survive. So she was wondering like if somebody could help replace that.
Yeah, we can do that for sure. Or somebody will do it.
Okay.
But, um, I'm like you, um, I told someone Josh Rom here, he's tonight with utilities. He's gonna give his report, but I would like to maybe post a sign. I came through there yesterday and it's, it's rough coming through there and I'm hoping that, and he's, he's speak to it in a moment, but hoping Louisville paving gets there very soon to get, put that street back the way it needs to be, you know, for everyone traveling it.
Oh, the dust is.
Hopefully, hopefully the driveways, um, I guess it's gonna be a smaller type of company doing the driveways versus the street itself. So I guess that's the difference between the two companies possibly. But, um, um, it, it has been a, a hard thing to deal with. I would agree with that, but it had to be done too.
Right. Yeah. I appreciate it being done. I mean, it was, um, every month when they jetted the pipes, I would have sewer come up in my shower downstairs. So it was really needed and I'm glad it got done. Um, and it has been a big headache, but I felt like, I mean, even the sewer company that Buchanan, uh, one of their guys went and gave me and a lot of the other residents his cell phone number and let us call anytime we had issues or problems. And as I said, like I called Scott when he was on vacation and bothered him and, uh, but he always took my calls and answered it.
Okay, Brandy. Thank you so much for coming up tonight. Yes, ma'am. Okay, any, who else would like to speak during public comment time? Come forward, please. Good evening.
I wanted to talk about Allen Lane. It has become a raceway. It's not even safe. We've had our mailbox taken out once. It's hard to even go to pick up your mail for fear somebody's gonna run you down. They, it's supposed to be a twenty-five mile an hour speed zone and they're doing fifty, sixty miles an hour. And we'd like a little help with that. We've requested, we've called the police to ask them to put more police officers out. I've told them they can park in our driveway anytime they like. And it's still going on.
Yeah, that, that road has definitely become a major bypass, uh, since, um, Ernie Harris, uh, the bridge, people coming from Borwick Farms are using that route. You know, in the mornings, I, I travel that way too and, and the load, the traffic on that piece of road has really become very heavy, you know, to the heavy.
Is it possible to put speed bumps?
I don't know if we're gonna get any speed bumps on that road yet because they're gonna, they're gonna probably start a construction there. I don't, I'm sure that's a project is almost, I know it's to be led in July to go underneath the railroad tracks. So construction would start, is it October?
We were told that two years ago too.
Yeah, I know. I was told twenty years ago. It's gonna start in October, but, but Rose Marie, the chief of police is standing in the back of the room. We, we, between ourselves and, and the county could probably help us out. We, we need to get some, uh, presence down there, I believe. So just try to.
We even put a sign up that said speed trap ahead at, on our, our property, hoping that might help slow people down. Somebody stole the sign.
Well, I tell you what, it's a straight stretch and I, I've caught myself going somewhat fast down through there too. So I'm sure that most folks think it's sixty-five up through there, but.
I mean, even, even if they were only doing thirty-five, it would be better. But they just fly down that road.
Maybe, maybe, uh, the chief can get a borrow, one of the, uh, traffic indicator flashing lights and say, hey, you're doing seventy mile an hour. You better slow down. I don't know. But since you've come tonight, let us try to have a plan to help you out down there. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma, Mayor, is that gonna go to, uh, two lanes each way once there's, because there, like you said, there's a lot of traffic on that for it to be a little tiny curvy twenty-five mile an hour road. It sounds like it needs to be widened.
I don't know, Jason. I haven't seen the real plans, but, uh, it's gonna be a connector to one forty-six coming underneath the railroad tracks. So I'm sure it might begin as a one lane each way, but I'm sure they are constructed to maybe go two lanes each way. You know anything about that, uh, Kevin Jeffries?
Well, yeah, because it's one forty-six is forty-five through there. Common or Commerce is forty-five. So it would make sense if that road was straightened out and turned into a forty-five mile an hour as well.
My understanding is, uh, sort of on the road committee, that, that Allen Lane will be realigned with, uh, Ernie Harris Parkway because right now it's offset. So, you know, it'll be realigned. Commerce Parkway, we're in the process of, of looking about, uh, you know, redoing it and widening it or whatever, all the way down through both the county and the city's, city's portion. So I, I believe that's, you know, I think it's gonna be four lanes or well, three, maybe three lanes with a, uh, you know, where it goes under the railroad there. But they're gonna let that contract for both Allen Lane and three ninety-three in October. And they're supposed to start construction on both of those in twenty-six is what we've been told. So that's, and I don't believe that they're gonna do anything, you know, the county is not, uh, does not like the, you know, putting speed bumps, you know, anywhere because of the, you know, the cost to put them in. And then if you, you know, get them covered with snow and you go in and you're snow plowed and you take them up and, you know, then there's a lot of maintenance to them. And, and so the county's just not ever gonna put any more speed bumps in, I don't think. So.
Thank you, Kevin.
And that one ain't gonna be realigned though, where the church is and then moving over?
Well, they're gonna move it over on the Allen property to, to align it with, uh, Ernie Harris. Because, you know, now it's, it's offset. You know, so my understanding it is they're supposed to, to realign.
On this end.
Oh, this, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, on the end, on one forty-six end?
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm not sure exactly where it's gonna come out. It's gonna be pretty close to where Bob McInnes' house or the, um, house, the brick house there was.
I think it's gonna line up with Spring House Pike.
Spring House Pike.
Yeah, I think it's right. Yeah.
That's right, Mayor. You're right.
Kevin, I'll throw you a party if you can get them to realign that Dairy Queen road with the one that goes by the, oh my gosh, I hate that stupid traffic light. I will throw you the biggest party you've ever seen. I'm telling you, if you can get them to do that one, that'd be great.
We have talked about it because of, you know, when we redo Commerce Parkway, you know, there's, uh, there's some talk about, you know, realigning all of that where it comes in around McDonald's and, you know, so we'll see how that works out. We're, we're advocating for that. So.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, uh, who would like to speak? Anyone else in public comment at this time? Okay, uh, Clark Deets, you want to speak in, uh, public comment tonight, right now? Okay, come forward, please. Please, uh, you, you've you've come a long ways to be here tonight. So I want to make sure you get heard and what you're, uh, what you're here for.
Yeah, we appreciate it, Mayor. Jonathan Renner with Clark Deets, engineer, um, here.
Rob Huckabee with Clark Deets as well.
So, uh, several months ago, um, we, we were talking with Cory and, and Cory approached us with looking at the stormwater infrastructure at LaGrange Acres. And we did a stormwater assessment of the area. Um, it's part of that stormwater assessment. We, we did a inventory of the infrastructure within stormwater or within LaGrange Acres. And looked at everything, kind of drains towards Wilburn Park. So it's, majority of it is the development there of LaGrange Acres, but also some of it crosses, drainage area crosses over Jericho Lane, Jericho Lane, I believe.
Road.
Road, Jericho Road. And then also there's some undeveloped land that's to the, I guess, southeast of LaGrange Acres that, that all drains down there. So what we did, first, first phase, look at existing records you guys had of the area of any infrastructure, um, then collect infrastructure, going out in the field with the GPS and getting any pipes or structures that are within the right of way, uh, public right of way. We didn't go between people's backyards. Um, if any of you guys live in that area, or I'm sure you're familiar with the area, um, the typical cross section in that area, there's no curb and gutter. It's more of a rural, uh, cross section, meaning there's, there's no, when the water hits the road, it just drains off into the yards. Back in the day, they're usually, most likely was a ditch in the yards or in the front of the yards and the, the water would just run over the surface, kind of work its way through homes and then all the way down to Wilburn Park. Um, over time, as people build sheds, build, uh, uh, fences, they like to have a flat yard. Some of these ditches get filled in. It's just kind of natural. That happens. Now the rain, the rain water, when it falls, doesn't have a, a, a way to go, kind of designed, the original design. So as, as we've been told, uh, talking to some residents out there, when it rains, water just kind of goes in, in, in towards people's garages or through people's fences. So, um, just over time, it's just, as development happens, um, in that area, it's, it's the, um, we've, we've seen it, we've heard about some local issues and flooding in the area. So we were brought on to look at it more of a big picture, uh, kind of at a thirty thousand foot view drainage analysis of the area to see what are some of the main areas and where we can, uh, put some infrastructure in that will help alleviate some of this, uh, local flooding uh, that happens in the area. Um, so what we've got today, um, is, and we've presented it to Cory and some of his staff, uh, several weeks ago about some of the, some, uh, two areas that we've, that we've identified and some infrastructure. It's, it's gonna help alleviate some of this local flooding and get it to pass down towards the park. Um, and so that's, that's kind of the, the overall gist of the project, uh, what we looked at. We haven't gone into actually designing the infrastructure. Uh, we looked at it, uh, from, like I said, from a watershed area, looking at using some engineering calculations to size some pipes, uh, and look at where we can keep the water, uh, and the infrastructure off of people's properties and try and get it back towards where it originally was intended to go. I'm using as minimal inf, minimum hard structures as possible. I think people in that area, you know, that likely don't want a curb and gutter in their front yard. So we try to keep everything, um, to where it's buried underground or flowing on the surface, um, but away from people's houses and garages. So in some of these areas, you're gonna have to, uh, looking at keeping it near the road, running it by the road in a pipe and then cutting through some yards to get down to, to where, like I said, where originally was flowing, um, but over time, stormwater just kind of goes wherever it's the lowest area. So with people filling in ditches, that's, that's kind of how it just naturally got to that point. Um, so the, you want me to go into any details at all or?
What's, do you have some numbers yet, yet, uh, on zero to, to million, to ten million or what do you have?
Yeah, well, so, so we've, so Cory asked us to look at a kind of, we, we, we identified two areas. The first area was along Chlor Avenue. As, as you guys know, that area across the street on Jericho, um, water comes across. There's a pipe there. Really, the overall consists, consensus in the areas, the pipes were not sized for what's been developed there now. So looking at putting bigger pipes in there. So for the infrastructure, it's along Chlor Avenue, as you guys, I don't know if it's up on the, the left one there. Looking at putting some pipe running down the ditch on Chlor Avenue, then through some, through some, some backyards, through an open ditch and then upsizing some pipes on Hoffman Avenue. Rob, you know what the overall?
Yeah, I'll be glad to jump in. And, and a couple of other things that I'll just mention, um, when this was originally platted in the fifties, we looked at that, where the flow was originally intended to go. There's some drainage easements, probably not as many as we'd like. And so this overall conceptual plan is to reestablish those flow lines where they were originally intended, where things were originally platted. The other things from the original plat, some of the pipes were proposed originally are not what we have out there now. They're actually much smaller. So even in the fifties, when this stuff was sized, when there was probably not a lot of development up on the hill on the north side of Jericho. Um, so we even have undersized infrastructure from what was envisioned seventy years ago. But high level, the, the area recommendations, um, about six hundred and fifty-five thousand, just for the stormwater improvements for the map on the left, so that Chlor, Hoffman, um, Latimer, um, area. So that's just the drainage improvements. And again, these are conceptual costs. Um, we did not do an exhaustive detailed land survey of the entire area because again, we first want to figure out where those problems were before we put together detailed design plans. Um, the area on, uh, the, the right, um, which is again, Latimer, a little bit farther downstream to Lakeview as well as Duncan Avenue. That's a little bit, uh, less exhaustive. So it's about two hundred and eighty-one thousand. Um, but again, as much as we could tell, there hasn't been a lot of drainage maintenance. As Jonathan mentioned, there's been some easement encroachments that we expect to happen over time. Some of it may have been deliberate. Some of it is just over time. Silt is gonna accumulate. Things are gonna grow up. So the goal is like, let's try to reestablish those, those drainage patterns, get the flow, uh, kind of away from properties, uh, reduces standing water. The, the subdivision does have probably other, let's say ancillary secondary improvements that would probably be needed. Got a lot of, of, uh, different sized driveway culverts that are a little small, undersized. Um, but overall, that's, um, they're not as critical as some of these main flow paths, getting some improvements and some area for relief in those, those locations.
I think, I, I, you know, I don't know how familiar the city council is with, with LaGrange Acres subdivision, but you're right. It was put in in the fifties. Um, it's flat. Uh, folks have put sheds on top of easements over time where the water should have gone. I've been down there to different folks' houses during torrential rains and water pools and sheds and comes in their front door, the front doors of their, um, family room, you know, they got sliding doors. It's just coming at them. So I think the council might realize the matters down with, um, the lack of the drainage system. Um, do you, do y'all know perhaps, we've been talking to the feds about some grants. Do you know Sheri or anyone, if any community, based on this matching money that the, um, that Transportation Cabinet is putting up presently that Jason Kinzer through the Economic Development Committee has been talking about, would disqualify as an application to help out an area for drainage? Or do you know that answer?
I mean, at a high level, we always want to get creative and leverage as much local dollars as we can to bring in, um, any other state or federal grant funding options. And so we want to put everything on the table. Honestly, from a high level, I see more of those dollars available for planning studies, analyses. A lot of them are truly in the past, recent years anyway, have been for, uh, admittedly pedestrian studies and transportation safety studies. There's not as much that I see on the drainage side of things. Um, going back fifteen, sixteen years ago, when we were talking about the ARA funds that were available, there was that goal of having a lot of shovel ready projects. And so I, I honestly, we'll, we'll put all options on the table, but I don't see anything that's like, hey, this is gonna be easy to bring in outside funding.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Lucy.
I just know the history of this because we lived down there.
I just know the history of this because we lived down there. We lived off Jericho Road. And I know initially when these houses were built, there were no, no sewers. It was all, okay. It was all septic and should not have been. Because a solid rock was maybe four or five feet below the surface. And we dealt with the whole time we lived there, which was in the 70s, with, with drainage, sewer drainage problems. And the county, the city was able to get a grant to come through there and do a sewer program where they did the, they pumped it up. What do you call those? John, somebody where they?
Grinder station.
Grinder stations. Each house has a grinder station. Then it was forced into another, then it was forced up. And, and, and to the utilities. And, and each person at that time had to pay a portion of it. It was, that was how we had to pay for it. But it was better than having black water in the back of your backyard.
That's what I was just asking, Jason.
Yeah, we had, we had black water everywhere. It was just, let's just say my, my son was maybe five or six and he had all kinds of just shoes to play in the yard. And she's, you don't play in the yard. But, and I think that they're still dealing with a lot of that in heavy rain. And the one question I have is on the, the picture that has Latimer on it, I know he's already taken it down, but there's a circle that's drawn, not quite a circle, but kind of a blob. What, what, what is the intention of that?
Yeah, and so one of the things that is, of course, we're going to try to relocate the drainage where it was originally intended.
Right.
And I alluded to, the original plat did have some dedicated drainage easements to it. Some of the plat does not have drainage easements where it really should. And so instead of putting a definitive line on a map that says this is exactly where this flow needs to go, admittedly, this is going to take a partnership with property owners. And the idea is going to be, let's find an area where we have a property boundary where we can work with property owner, reestablish an easement and provide some flow through there. So I didn't want to, we didn't want to dictate and prescribe exactly where the flow is going to go.
Okay, I, I, I just didn't know if that was going to be like, you know, you were going to take those houses and?
No, that's not the intent at all.
Okay, I think somebody might look at that and think of that.
And also, we were looking at, we have a survey, now done an official survey of kind of where you want to put it. So we know that, you know, it flows from, from Latimer down to Lakeview in that area. Right now, it probably just flows across the surface, wherever it can go. We want to concentrate it to, we've been overland, probably a ditch.
Well, that's not very far to go. I mean, it doesn't, not the ground, it doesn't have much.
Well, and also to mention about the grinder stations, I know I've talked to Scott in this area, and I think Cory mentioned it, when we were, we were looking at this, reviewing the draft, that there are still homes in that area that still have those ejector pumps, grinder pumps.
Yeah.
It's always our intent, we want to make sure when you're touching a property, if there's other utilities that are, that are city owned, again, they're ones, you know, I know Scott has mentioned that being, you know, it's, he just knows there's grinders there or septic tanks there. So we also don't know where those are to show a line going through somebody's septic field, we didn't want to do that. So that's something that would go into, you're looking at more of it.
Well, the grinder pumps, they did away with the, with the septic tank, this drainage field, and then it was just forced up into a main, and then the main forced it up wherever.
Right.
I just got it out of my yard, that's all I knew. The other thing that concerned me was, I know that there is a, a concern for someone building to the north, well, it's the northeast of there, quite a big subdivision. And will that affect, the drainage from that be affecting that? Or will they be responsible for their own drainage?
Well, they'll be responsible for their own internal drainage.
Good.
But obviously, if they're, and we did look at the watersheds in the upstream area of, of La Grange Acres. So just depending on where that development is, we certainly want to take that into account when we're sizing this downstream infrastructure, when these replacements are being made.
Well, this is one area of La Grange I think that definitely needs work and needs help. And I think those people, the people in La Grange Acres would really appreciate it.
I just want to close and thank you all. You all have been very helpful. We've, we've seen you at each and every conference we attend. You've always been attentive to what Cory's asked you to do. So I know you all have done your initial studies. Where I would say we'll go with this, as Lucy just said, this, if, if, if there is an area of La Grange that needs to be looked at for future drainage improvement area, this would be one of them. And I think as we approach next year's budget, we just have to decide as a council, what kind of revenue or appropriation would we like to begin to put into this idea there to help improve those properties? I think Cory would agree, those properties do flood down there and probably, probably the worst of anywhere in La Grange. I know we've got other problem areas, but I want to thank Sheri, Munkins and yourselves for being, helping us on these ideas because I think hopefully, future city councils will put these kind of appropriations into the budget to help these, these areas out. Because I think the people would wish that we would and, but to what degree, I'm not sure how far we can go because I'm sure it could reach into the millions. But if we spend a half a million, that'd be better than no millions if your water's coming in your back door, you know, so.
And I know as a person who has lived down there, and I know, still know a few, quite a few people that still live down there, the more that we can hear, you know, we would like to hear from them. If, if it's be a letter, you know, they wouldn't have to come and speak, it would be a letter that they could write to the city council about this situation. I think the more that, it would keep it up in the front.
I have a closing story on La Grange Acres.
I have a question too, Mayor.
I grew up here, I grew up here in La Grange and used to ride my bicycle down there and Kenny Powell may have, Jason Kinzer may have, but the only thing I remember about La Grange Acres mostly was, there was a town policeman here, his name was Si. And we had one policeman and he raised rabbits. And he had about 50 rabbits and I didn't do it, but my buddies went down, I didn't do it, but my buddies went down there one night and turned all of his rabbits loose on Latimer Avenue. Okay, who's got the next question?
Mayor, what a, why, why does this, if I'm explaining to somebody else in another neighborhood, when they're taking assessments of each homeowner to fix things that are wrong in their neighborhood, why does this fall on the council and not just assess to, an assessment levied on each homeowner to fix their drainage issue in their neighborhood?
I mean, the real.
Our mayor or anybody, I don't, I don't know.
You want me to weigh in on that?
Yeah, why, why is it to La Grange, the entire city of La Grange and not their own neighborhood? Because other places, their own neighborhood, you know, if you need to bring your road up to code or whatever, each household pays, you know, and they bring the road up or, so it sounds like they need to bring this up to snuff. And why is this not assessed to each household? Why are people from other neighborhoods paying for, for this?
Well, they, answer that partially, Jason. We do have a stormwater management fee that every property owner in the county is assessed presently. That's on the stormwater management. Cory, I think our appropriation yearly is 125,000, as we're in a partnership as a sub, sub recipient of the county. So we are, there is stormwater management, money's being generated. But to say, would they, you know, MSD might go into an area like that and assess everyone, but I'm not sure exactly. Cory, he takes care of water projects all over the city through stormwater management, but I don't think, we do have some 50/50 grants, I think Cory, you know, to help on individual property owners, but we're, we're talking about a whole subdivision, the problem comes a little bit different matter. I don't know.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, when we're talking about public stormwater, it's kind of similar to roads. Everybody uses the roads and we're not, we don't have a, a road utility user fee. Everybody, the community benefits from having those roads. The same is true if a particular area, it's a development down at the bottom of the hill, they may have more stormwater infrastructure needs as opposed to those who are on top of the hill. But nonetheless, the entire community benefits from having adequate stormwater infrastructure, having people who are safe from normal drainage patterns. So, you know, I think there was, when we met with Cory initially, there were, and the mayor, there was a number of subdivisions with a history of flooding problems, drainage problems. This one has, I think, a lot of history and clearly we saw from the report that, you know, we have pipes that are basically, you know, 15 inch pipes in the ground, it really should be 36 inch pipes, 42 inch pipes. So it's not just that they're twice as big, these pipes are maybe 25% of what their actual capacity should be for a normal storm event. We're not sizing these things for, you know, off the chart, 100 year storm events.
And as Lucy said, planning and zoning just paid, just planned another neighborhood, so more rooftops, less rain absorbing soil. Everybody be planning and zoning needs to kick in on this. Keep improving these neighborhoods.
So that, Jason, you know, as new developments coming in, I mean, planning zoning is one that should be the ones defining what your stormwater should be. I mean, engineering practices today are not what they were 1950, right? 1950, just let's just build it, have someone come live, you know, go downstream. Now, your flow off your development has to equal what it was pre-development. So whenever, whenever it goes into this property, to the, to the north, what, northeast, their flow, their runoff of their property collectively has to equal what it is now. So in theory, as new developments going in, your runoff downstream is never more. The, the problem is now you've got 1950 developments, the city has maintained the roads for 70 years and that's part of what the city owns. And you've got stormwater, that's city stormwater from, you know, maybe across from Jericho coming through somebody that lives in La Grange. It's tough to have the person living in La Grange pay for what's coming from across Jericho. That's, that's where the, and it's a gray area and cities tackle it many different ways. I don't, I think you can talk to an attorney here will tell you something different than attorney down in, you know, in Higginfield. So there's just, there's just different interpretations.
Well, and obviously if we can find some grant money, so either federal or state or whatever, we'd, we'd certainly want to help them out with that if we could and work toward that. That would, that would be the easiest solution for everyone. Call Andy Beshear and have him kick in a little cash for us.
And you, what you've got now are not years, but decades of stormwater neglect. And it's coming. You're going to have stormwater departments, just like you've got wastewater departments. There's already areas that have that. And that's going to be a completely different entity that you're going to have to service because of the growth of things that are to come based on what was in the ground 50 years ago. A 15 inch culvert might have served that, but now a 36 inch culvert is needed due to the population. But it's only going to continue to grow. We've got Patrick that does our stormwater department now, and that's one guy. I would, I would say that within 10 years, Patrick's going to have a crew that's going to have to maintain the stormwater, just like Cory does Public Works, Josh does Water. It's coming, so it's just going to be an added expense that you're going to have to plan for and that you're going to have to maintain. That's why you've got MS4 programs and everything else now that's mandated by the state. Stormwater is now going to be the next coming of what you're going to have to manage, just like you do everything else.
True statement. Thank you all very much. As I said, we've heard your report, we've got your report and the council itself through our street committee, who Kenneth Powell chairs, we will continue to discuss this and see perhaps what kind of interest the council has in trying to find the funding to improve the situation there, okay? But thank you all so much for coming to see us tonight.
So we got one more thing, Mayor, if that's all right?
What else you have?
For the bridges.
Oh, yeah. Bridges? Okay, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
We, we were tasked with, with looking at those four bridges, pedestrian bridges, the wooden bridges at Wilburn Park. We did an assessment of the bridges. Our conclusion out of all four bridges is, you know, they're structured, there's no issue we found there. A lot of it's more, there's, there's some deck boards that need to be refaceted. And also your, your maintenance of, of painting them, I mean, some of the boards have, have started to show some age, just with, with, with new stain would go a long way. There's a couple, the two, two spillways, upper, upper pond, you've got some silt and vegetation growing, where the spillway is where the water overflows into the next pond. It's growing there, that vegetation needs to be cleaned out. We don't want to, we don't want to impede anything that's going to overflow, that's intended to be free flowing there. And then also, you've got the impoundment downstream, the main impoundment, it used to be an Eleanor Railroad built that dam there. There's a lot of debris, a lot of vegetation growing up there. And one thing that we did note in there is that, that, that impoundment, that dam, we noted that, that I think it was mentioned at one point, that has overflowed flowing wise. So we just noted that, you know, the city may consider doing an assessment of that dam. It's supposed to be done every couple of years. I don't know when the last time it's done. Records we found has been done in the last couple of years, is something we want to put out, you know, to look at that. Vegetation that's grown on the backside shouldn't have stuff back there. So it's something we just noted in the report, that's something you guys might want to consider. We've brought it to the attention of, of some of the staff, so.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't notice any beavers, no. They're there.
Okay, we appreciate you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Soon as the last person speaks in public comment, we're going to take about a five to 10 minute break. This council really needs to, maybe y'all do too, maybe use the restroom or something. So does anyone else want to speak during public comment tonight? Anyone? No one? Okay, we're going to take about a five to eight minute break, okay? Thank you all.
I don't know, see who's absent. Um, Joel's here, uh, Heather, I don't know where Heather is. Get Heather back in here and we'll begin. Try to get this thing wrapped up if we can. Okay, our next item for tonight is our Main Street Director's Report, Ms. Sarah Garrett. Good evening, Sarah. Sorry, sorry, we're so late getting to you tonight, but.
I'll forgive you this time, but.
That's part of it.
Yes, we're on the clock, so, no, um, hi, how are y'all? Um, okay, so, there's actually quite a bit of new things going on in Main Street. Um, we have our last tracks iTunes of the season coming up, uh, that will be on the sixth, this coming Friday, it's the sixth, right? The fifth, it's gonna be on the fifth, uh, so that's this Friday. Um, and then that's the Allen Lane Band is playing, and then we're gonna have Moving Groove with Whitney, uh, give us some line dance instruction as like the opener, so bring your dance and shoes, uh, come out and join us, it'll be real fun. Uh, the next day, we have Trackside Market, so we'll be closing down East Main Street from First to Cedar. Yeah, that's correct, and then Walnut, uh, from Main to Jeff. So, that'll be great, we have, I think, about forty vendors that are gonna be there, uh, with handcrafted items. Um, and then the next big thing after that is gonna be the Alley Loop Festival, and that is gonna be October eleventh, um, of course, in the alleys. Uh, more information to come on that. Uh, our Farmer's Market is still going strong, um, the last Farmer's Market of the season is gonna be October twenty-fifth, uh, but again, they will come back, um, for shops all Saturday. So they'll, they'll be back again in November, but pretty much, uh, the weekly will end on the twenty-fifth. Um, I have hired, uh, a new person to give me, get me some help, uh, she, uh, works front of office for me. Uh, you guys, many of you probably know her, Nancy Griffin, uh, she writes a lot of grants, so I'm really excited to see how she can help us with that, she's gonna help us explore that, um, just kinda help me with the day-to-day and keeping books and everything like that. She's absolutely, she actually had my job a decade ago, she's been the Main Street Director before, so.
What's, what's, just out of curiosity, how are the, how are the duties split up, like what's?
So, it's similar to what it has been before, uh, I've always had an administrative assistant. She's just come on, and then just because of her expertise, she's just gonna take on some roles of, uh, grant writing, um, as they come. So, of course, with my help, but yeah, she's still.
We need a wastewater grant, I'm just saying.
Well, I'll have her get right on that, just for you, Jason. Um, so we're very excited to have her on board, and she's been fabulous, and I think it's gonna be really, really great for us. Um, and then the, another big piece of news is, uh, we reconfigured the board a little bit, so, um, my new board president is Allison Beech, you may know her from Edward Jones, um, Financial Investment Group. Uh, Paige Wright is my new Vice President, uh, she is the owner of Simply Blessed, she also owns that building, uh, so she's a building owner and a store owner. Um, of course, Russ is still on as, uh, my treasurer, and CND folks is, uh, my secretary still. So, you know, the same players, just different roles, so it's really exciting, and I think we're just gonna keep growing. Any questions?
How's the facade grants coming along?
I should've wrote it down to talk to y'all about, great, um, let's see, since I saw you last, we've had two more submit, their final facade grant, so, uh, Pam Leverett and Brad Leverett, they have just completed their facade grant, and they're just waiting, they're gonna turn into W nine and then they'll be paid out. And then, um, the, it's, uh, one oh two East Main Street, that's the, uh, rainy day resale. And of course, that building kinda lls around, so there's a storefront on Main, and then there's a storefront on First, and they've repainted both of those facades, um, and they have turned in their official paperwork this past week, so. It's going, um, and I'm expecting at least one more facade grant coming in shortly from another building owner. Um, and yeah, we're just kinda keeping the conversation open, uh, with my merchants and building owners as much as possible. Um, I remind them that it's still there every time I send them an email, so.
What's the, uh, phone number and the hours of operation of Main Street Welcome Center? Or if that's what you call it, what's the hours there that somebody will be there?
So, we are going to have to change them, because I based, we based it off of my last, uh, administrative assistant, and she could only commit from ten AM to one PM. Uh, typically, we're there nine to five, but the official hours were always the, just the ten to one, but now that I have Nancy on, those hours are gonna, we'll change those to kinda adapt to her schedule. Um, typically, I'll be there, like I said, nine to five unless I have a meeting, um, and then she comes in usually around eleven, eleven-thirty, and she stays till five PM, which is usually when the rush comes in anyway, we don't typically see a whole lot of people come in. And then, as for the number for Main Street, I have two numbers, I have my personal, well, my office cellphone number, and then I also have the Main Street landline number, uh, but the office cell is five oh two four three four eight zero three nine. And I don't have my landline memorized, but I can tell you it starts with five oh two. Uh, let's see here, five oh two, uh, two six nine zero one two six.
All right. Do you get very many people walking in there and just saying what's, what's going on in this town, or what do you get there?
Yeah, um, in the summertime, it really picks up a lot, in the wintertime, not so much. Um, but in the summertime, we get people, I mean, groups come in all the time, I mean, I, we probably welcome a dozen guests every week, um, and I just got a map, so people can put a pushpin where they're from, I got someone from, uh, let's see, I got someone from Poland that came in, and Ghana, someone from Ghana came in, so it's very fun. Um, and we have a welcome to La Grange sign that they can hold and take a picture, take a selfie with if they would like, so.
Have y'all had any merchant, merchant meetings lately, and what's the issues and concerns of our merchants?
So, uh, merchant meetings, we have rescheduled to hopefully, um, fit better in with the schedules of my merchants, because we had trouble getting people in the door, um, in the evening time, so we're switching it up to the morning hours. Uh, it's gonna be the second Wednesday of every month, um, so same date, just different time, um, in the mornings, and then we're kind of reframing it a little bit, so instead of me talking to them for an hour and having like that, I don't know, open dialogue, I'm trying to focus it more, so it's more of an educational tool for them. I want them to be able to come in and learn how to improve themselves and improve their business. Um, so Allison, as I said, my president, she, uh, has connections with a lot of different people through, um, a networking group who specialize in, uh, independent shops and, and how they can do better. So, we're gonna have some classes and seminars, and we're going to learn what they wanna learn, um, so that way we can curate those classes to them, to better fit their needs and make it worth their while. So, I'm really excited about it, it starts, uh, September this month, so.
Years ago, uh, Main Street Association used to have, used to have a event at least once a year, I thought, it's, it was sort of like state of the city event.
Yep.
Are we ever gonna, are we ever gonna do that again?
So we did that, uh, this past January, we just called it the Open House, uh, it's, it's similar, from what I understand, it's similar. Of course, I wasn't there when it was called that, um, where we just have everyone from the community come in, that wants to come is welcome, um, and we can talk all about Main Street, and they can learn about the program. That's another thing I'm trying to work on, is kind of explaining to people what the Main Street program truly is. The name isn't inherently, it's not super obvious, because I don't even focus just on Main Street, I have a larger district than that. Um, but yeah, so we, we do that annually, we'll do an open house annually, right around after Christmas, after the hustle and bustle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else having questions for Sarah, or anything?
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah, appreciate you, thank you very much. Okay, uh, see, Donna Sabo, who's speaking on behalf of her, Donna, hi Donna, good evening.
Rhonda's also here, you all that know, I guess everyone knows Rhonda. Good evening, um, I'll give you some quick updates, and I'll be out the door. Um, bank, bank balance, hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, some things that were, are happening or that we're working on. Um, the biggest thing is the mural that's going down by the pawn shop down by southeast will be installed on September fifteenth. They will be out on September fifth to do a site, just evaluate the site, and then that mural will be going up there. We're excited about that, it's gonna look really nice. Um, some other projects we're working on is the clock on Main Street just needs an overhaul. It just looks a little drab, and it needs to look real classy, and so that's something that, um, I met with, uh, Bill Lamlon and Barbara from Historic District Commission. I met with them, and we had some great discussions, I'll, um, get with you on those mayors, but, um, on the, but we, uh, we had some good conversations on what could be done there to make that, uh, vibrant and pretty and look nice, and it, it really needs to be the, you know, it's sort of the showcase of the Main Street when you walk down there, so. It's sort of fading in the background, it's painting, it needs a lot of work, so. Uh, Rhonda and I are working with Great Day Live, we're gonna spend a Saturday morning at the golf course at Eagle Creek. Um, don't have a lot of details on that yet, it's on our agenda, that's something we're gonna do on a Saturday, and do a Great Day Live event there. Um, EDC, the signs are, uh, signs have been ordered, they should be in at any time. I feel like I'm leaving something out.
Where are we on licensing with that, Donna, with the, having the, having the license and everything, and when are we looking at for a go-date on the EDC?
We don't have a go-date, but everything's in, so.
Oh.
It, it's sort of in the state's hand, they will, they will contact us, come out, do a, my understanding is they'll come out, do a walkthrough with us in the city, and then it's, it's, we're on their time.
Okay, so we've done everything on our part, we're good, so.
Yes, I believe so.
Do we have to have the signs up before they come out and all that?
Yes, and they should be in any day, so.
Okay, thanks.
Or Cory will get those going. Other thing that we're working on is a group that is gonna meet every other month. We've invited Main Street, Project Guild ladies, and we're just gonna get together every couple months to see what everyone's doing and how we can help each other, so we're gonna start that probably next month, I don't have the date on that. And I think that's all my notes tonight. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Well, we had a nice ribbon cutting at the Tourism Center.
We did.
Couple weeks ago, it was very nice.
It was very nice.
Everyone seemed to really, uh, appreciate the facility there and what's been done, and what you're doing, and what Rhonda's doing, so. They just felt very good about, I think, the, the building and how it's come along.
Actually, the feedback was just really, really positive for everything that's been.
Had a good turnout of folks.
Yeah, we had probably sixty to seventy people, I, you think more about that many were there that day, we had a good crowd. Trey was there, so, yeah, it was a great time.
Well, uh, does anyone have any comments for Donna or thoughts? Appreciate all that you're all doing, you're, you're really helping out in many different ways, the Train Museum, you're funding a lot of things, so we appreciate all the many things you're helping to do in our town. Basically, keeps us from having to do what you're providing the funds for, so.
And one other project that I'm working on, um, is the La Grange Historical, um, African-American Cemetery. So I put in for a grant to get new fencing there, and the La Grange Rotary Club is going to take over that as far as cleaning it up. Asked Kenneth for some assistance on equipment there, uh, we need some tree guys out there, we need a lot of landscapers, but we're go- My goal, and it's not gonna be something quick, but my goal is to have that on the National Underground Railroad, um, Trail, and it would be a big deal for the city of La Grange, but we need to get that up to standard. Um, I did speak with Vivian Jones this morning, um, there's only a couple people that, um, are still alive that have relatives in that cemetery. Um, but, uh, she gave me her blessing, she said it, it's, it's a long time coming, so we want to, um, all work together and try to make that a really nice area for the city.
All right, Donna, if no one else has anything for you, appreciate you coming and all you're doing.
Thank you.
That's him.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Scott Treese, and he's not here, so it's gonna be Josh Rom, speaking on behalf of Scott Treese, so. See what he has to say about Scott tonight.
Hello, Mayor and Council members, how are you all?
Good evening.
Um, so, project updates, um, so Fourth Street Gravity Sewer is done, um, we got it done right on the deadline. Like I said, it was kind of a couple hic- hiccups, um, the awaiting on paving, um, with Cory scheduling, it is tenderly being, it's gonna start on Tuesday, they're gonna start prepping, and next week, the road's gonna get paved, and then the driveways are gonna get paved afterwards by the contractors. And the yards, the, uh, concern that, uh, Randy had, we haven't done a final walkthrough, so we will, uh, address the yards, and we have a one-year warranty on those, so if they're not up to standards, we will, we will address those, so. We'll make sure those are fixed up to our standards and homeowner standards. Um, Quartz Water Project, uh, we're gonna put it out to rebid, we had, um, one bid that was way above our, um, estimate, like three or four hundred thousand, so we're putting it out to bid in the first quarter of next year. Um, Fort Pickens Tank Rehab, uh, it's scheduled to be, go, uh, our tank's gonna go down from nine five to nine nineteen. Um, we haven't got the full confirmation, so it might be moved back. Um, Allen Lane, we're waiting KYTC to start, um, that's gonna be, they're moving water line for us and sewer line. Um, Oldham Reserve, um, we're concerned over no progress on the pump station. We've had a couple meetings with them, and they, they've been working really hard on the gravity and the force main, but no start on the pump station, so we're supposed to have that down by, down and finished by January one, and we don't know if that's gonna get done by then, so we're hoping that their promises of two crews by the end of this month. We're hoping that that does actually happen this month, but fingers crossed that it happens. Um, water pressure-reducing valve projects at Division Water getting, uh, reviews right now. Uh, the East Peak Road Sewer Extension, it's approved and, um, waiting for Division Water, uh, awaiting contractors, and then the, um, Trilogy Sewer Project is approved by Division Water, and we are just waiting on contractors. That's all I got for tonight, anybody has any questions, I will take them.
Is Fourth Street, is that gonna be a complete overlay, that's not gonna be a strip patch, is it?
Complete overlay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I was scared they were just gonna, uh, overlay the.
No, sir.
The cut they made, but it's gonna be a total overlay, right?
They're gonna be, they're gonna put a base down first, right, and then mill it down inch and complete overlay, right Cory? Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that was gonna happen.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody have any, uh, do you have a financial report that you gave tonight?
Yes, sir, everybody should have a financial.
Okay, has everyone seen the financial report, the utilities, anyone wanna make a motion to approve the financial standing of the Utility Commission tonight?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Kenneth Powell.
Second.
Second by Jason Kinzer, can you further discussion, if not, always in favor of motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
One pose, thank you, Joshua, appreciate you, Rory Horton, Rory Horton's Chairman of the Board, I believe, still, still there.
He's sleeping.
Yeah, but that's okay. Um, if I may, I'm gonna jump down you all, we, we, we've been holding these folks up here tonight, and, and I'm sorry the agenda got set like this, but it's not really fair to folks that were trying to recognize for their services. If I could just to let them go and, and be recognized, um. We have Item twenty-three, a presentation by the Tourism Commission honoring volunteers for their dedication and beautification efforts. And Donna Sabo brought this to my attention, and she wanted to come tonight and, and just recognize two of her, two of the volunteers that, whether, I'm not sure the council knows them, but they should know them if they don't, but, um, if you've been around La Grange and downtown and in that area, you have seen them and, uh, heard about them, and just recognize the contributions they make, so Donna, uh, what do you, what would you like to bring forward tonight?
Uh, Mayor, City Council, I want to recognize two of, uh, my precious volunteers here in the city of La Grange. First one's Pam Leverett, whenever I call her up, she grabs her overalls and she's ready to go. You've probably seen Pam out in the Alley Loop continuously working, a lot of hours, she put a lot of effort, and a lot of heart into the Alley Loop, so I wanted to recognize her for that. And also at Tourism, she's helped me anything we've needed done. Also, I wanna point out to Patrick over there in the corner, very quiet guy, Patrick, I can reach out to him, he's put furniture together for me at Tourism when we move, he moves stuff to Tourism. He's, um, he's gonna paint some poles on Main Street this week, anything I ask him to do, he's just, he jumps, and he takes care of it, and does a great job, and I just want the councils to know there's these two volunteers, but there's hundreds more in our community, and I think we need to make sure that everyone knows who these people are and how they give selfish, selfishly for our city, so. I would like to recognize Pam Leverett first. Something from the mayor, this is Pam, I'm sure there's something you wanna say, Pam.
Well, I've been in La Grange a long time, moved here twenty-three years ago, and, um, just have loved being involved in all different kinds of things, when the kids were little, we would go up to the Farmer's Market, and, uh, that, that was where we learned how to, just, we just felt the love, and I just feel like it's a natural thing, and for us to be able to give back to our community, and I'm a big proponent of the generations that are ready to serve, you know, to teach them, and to just model them, model the ser- the servant's heart, not so much a volunteer, but more of a serving of community, and I just really feel like there's a lot of potential in working with these beautiful folks, and Patrick, and just willing to just go out and do anything, and listen to our ideas, and we sit around and we, we're like, what are we gonna do next? But I, I have this, uh, this dream to have this volunteer, a volunteer program that's more organized. Um, I don't have time to do that myself right now, but I think there's, uh, people out there that would be willing to do that and to coordinate that, because I feel like, um, there are many projects that are, um, left to be done, that we, we need some more leaders in all the generations, and I really feel like volunteers are not just young people wanting to go pick up leaves, I think it's the generations, um, all the generations can share what they're know, what, what they have to offer, no matter what stage of life you are in, so, just like to keep that going, so, thank you. Yes, we're, um, I have a business in Mercantile Market on Main, it's the Sugar Beets Pantry, and we're getting ready to launch, uh, Sugar Beets Sweets, which is the one hundred East, uh, Poplar Alley, the Blue House in the Alley, Alley Loop over there, our daughter did the mural, uh, the big stripe mural, so it was a natural thing for us to be there, so we're excited to do, um, to launch that, uh, we're having an open house on, um, Alley Loop Festival, October eleventh, so come by and see what we're done, what we've done, but it's on Airbnb. Um, it's a, it's a sweet, a Sugar Beets Sweets is a sweet to rest your head, to come and have a party, to, um, celebrate, it's for everything, you know, we just wanna make sure that it's used, and I think, um, Elsie, we've learned a lot about how it was moved over there into that alley, so we really wanna honor what she started, and to be able to have that space, uh, really beautiful over there, and keep it going, I mean, the Alley Loop, I'm on that committee as well, so. I love that area, it's, it's a natural place for us to be, so I'm happy that we can do, this is a retirement gig, right? This is my husband back here, bro, so anyway.
Thank you, Pam, very much, okay?
What do I need to do?
It's a letter.
It's just a li- did they, did y'all get the letter in your pockets from, from myself?
I think so, yes.
Huh? Anyway, each one of them got a letter from myself, it says, "On behalf of Seela Grange, we want to extend our heartfelt gratitude for the countless hours of dedication and volunteer service you have given our community. Your contributions have touched nearly every corner of our city, whether through Main Street Projects, the Alley Loop Initiative, your support of La Grange Tourism, or your leadership in implementing murals that showcase the heart of the spirit." There's another couple paragraphs, um, I'm not gonna keep reading, 'cause we gotta keep moving, "But La Grange is stronger and more vibrant and more beautiful because of you. Thank you, Pam and Patrick Wilburn, for the extraordinary example you have set, and for the love you continue to pour into our community." So, thank you, Pam and Patrick, um, I see Patrick, or, I see Patrick, I, huh? I see Pa- I see, I see Patrick everywhere, and, uh.
I've been building a deck down the road, and I, I did change my shirt.
But, uh, but. Patrick, I can call him on a whim, like, can you move the horse trailer? And then he moves it, and I'm like, can you come back, we need to move it a little bit more, a couple more inches, and he's so patient with me, and he's just a great volunteer, and he's a great handy man, and he's, he's a great friend, but thank you very much, thanks for letting us.
Would Patrick like to say anything?
Patrick?
No. No, Pam, uh, she hit it on the head with the service piece, um, I, I retired three and a half years ago, and I'm looking for any way I can help serve this community, um, we love it here in Oldham County. Um, I'm not quite in the city limit, but, uh, uh, we'll just do whatever we can to help out, and, uh, glad I got to meet these great people when we can help.
Sorry, real quick.
He's in the newspaper, it's a smile.
Thank you, thank you, and give later.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for sitting so long.
We'll back up and go to, uh, Item fourteen, Introduction of Ordinance Number Fifteen, Series Twenty-Two-Five, for the first reading of Ordinance Amending and Replacing the Code of Ethics Ordinance. Um, that's basically all we, I guess, needs to be said tonight.
Right.
Is announcing as a first reading, and, uh.
Now, I was told that I had to read all the wheresses.
I don't think.
Do I have to read the wheresses?
I don't think so, not on the first reading, we're just, we're announcing an ordinance amending and replacing the Code of Ethics Ordinance applicable to officials, officers, employees of the city, and the city agencies.
Okay.
Okay, that's basically the basis of the ordinance.
And basically, this ordinance, our Code of Ethics that we have now was from December fifteenth, nineteen ninety-four. So, that's, that was quite long ago, and the Kentucky League of Cities, um, promulgated a Model Code of Ethics as of July two thousand twenty-five, and they were addressing all the current requirements. At that time, they had also put in a couple of, at least one section, at that time, it was called Section Twenty-two. Uh, that seemed to be quite controversial with most cities, and so that was removed, and instead of that, they added, they have, well, now I've covered it up, of course I would, um, Section Twenty, and that, I think that's the one that most everyone on council has, has a question about. Section Twenty-two and Twenty-three, uh, well, this is not as stringent as the other one was. Uh, the official communications gen- it has a thing about that, but it is not as stringent as the other one was. And then there's a section on email, uh, that the city officials shall maintain an official email address, which we have, and provide the email address to the city clerk, and this address must be separate from their personal email account. And this address must be separate from their personal email account. That's all it states, you know?
It's the Hillary Clinton rule.
Well, I don't know, but no city business, no city business shall occur through a personal email account. That all city should go through the city one that we have. And city officials shall maintain emails according to the KDLA Record Retention Schedule for emails. And city officials shall direct any record-keeping questions to the city clerk. So that, a lot of that has, a lot of that original one was taken out, just very bare bones. That's here. The Code of Ethics just basically deals with what you cannot do as an employee of the city.
Okay. Thank you, Lucy, for that.
And I just have a quick question. Can the Ethics Board remove an elected council member without a vote from the council?
No.
Okay, that was, that was one I wanted to.
I don't think, I don't think they had the power to move, remove anybody from anything.
No. It's more of a recommendation.
Okay, all right. That was my only question. Thank you for fixing the social media issue. I think a lot of us had an issue with that, so thank you.
That was already fixed by Kentucky League of Cities. They recommended that we change that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lucy. Item 15, introduction of ordinance number 16, series 2025, for a first reading tonight. Parking ordinance. Laura, you want to speak to that at all?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, just as an intro.
So the whereas has, whereas over the years, the population of LaGrange and the corresponding number of vehicles using and parking upon city streets has significantly increased so that the parking regulations, especially in residential neighborhoods, should be periodically reviewed and updated so as to accommodate the impact of growth and change in the city. This entire parking ordinance has been reviewed. There are changes to many different areas. One of the first changes is regarding parking in residential neighborhoods. It had been that it was completely prohibited. This allows parking, but there are a lot of guidelines to follow when parking on a city street. And if you read in the next section, 72.03, it goes into a lot of situations where parking is prohibited still. So it loosens up the ability for people to park on the streets, but there's a lot of caveats to where they can and can't park. There's some changes in wording to various different portions of the parking ordinance. The snow emergencies section has kind of had an overhaul so that if there is a snow emergency declared, the city can get plows in to plow city streets without vehicles being in the way. So that has been revised. There's also, we did have a prohibition against parking for more than two hours in the downtown business district. That has now been changed to a four-hour parking limit. So to allow people to shop, go to lunch, you know, have a little bit more time to spend in the downtown area. We felt that two hours was not enough. The penalties have changed. The penalties were rather excessive previously. So the amount of penalty has been amended to $25 for parking violations. So all of this is to kind of bring the parking ordinance more in line with the amount of traffic and people needing to park on our city streets.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Laura. We'll announce that as our first reading for that ordinance. Have a public hearing at our meeting in October, okay? Item 16, ordinance, it'd be a second reading and public hearing tonight of ordinance number 14, series 2025, ordinance levying a general tax ad valorem. Cindy, I'd like for you to come forward on this, just for any maybe, any discussion on the, on the structure of how this comes about. Yourself and Heather worked on this, I've known together, trying to come up with the actual tax rate allowable. So it'd be a city of LaGrange, ordinance levying a general tax. Pretty much said that. I'll read it in its entirety when we get ready to do it. Anything further on that, Cindy, about the tax tonight?
I don't have, I don't have anything additional to add after first reading. I know some council members and some citizens of the community reached out on how the tax was computed. If anybody has any additional questions related to that, I can try and answer those.
I'll go ahead and just state what it is for the public here. An ordinance levying a general tax, whereas necessary, to obtain the operation maintenance of city government and to maintain the police protection of the resident city and further protect public health, safety, and welfare. Whereas the Commonwealth of Kentucky, through its statutes and constitution, particularly KRS 92.280, KRS 92.281, and all other applicable law, does hereby authorize and empower the city of the home rule class to levy a tax for general purposes. Now therefore ordained by the city council of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, there's hereby levied an ad valorem tax of the rate of 19.1 cents per $100 worth of real property in the state of all persons, firms, corporations, associations, having their office or place of business or executing any right license within the city of LaGrange. There's further hereby levied an ad valorem tax of 26.5 cents per $100 worth of personal property in the state of all persons, firms, corporations, associations, having their office or place of business or executing any right license or franchise within the city of LaGrange. This tax is levied to purpose for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, ending July, June 3rd, 2026. I'm going to read more paragraphs than I think everyone will, I think, hope get the gist of what this is about. The tax levied by this ordinance is assessed as January 1st, 2025 pursuant to the provision of KRS 92.420, parentheses 3, and KRS 92.280. And all said tax are hereby declared to be due, payable, and collectible as of September 15th, 2025. Any taxpayer residing in the city may pay tax bill at any time, if it received an any amount paid for October 15th, shall receive a discount of 2% of the gross amount of the bill. Does any council member wish that I continue to read? Okay, I just want to make sure because I don't want this to be challenged by anyone that I did not read it. And but I hope that everyone understands in the city what the tax rate's going to be, when, when you get your discount, when it's to be paid and things of that type. So do we have a council member that would be in agreement to support this tax rate that's being levied tonight in our tax rate proposal?
I do.
Okay, motion by Lucy Ricketts.
I'll second.
Second by Latasha, thank you, Latasha. So we have a motion of second to support this, this tax tonight on the real property in the city and also the personal property. So who would like to make a motion to go into a public hearing? Do you consider, motion made by trade, second by who?
I'll second.
Second by Latasha, okay. We have a motion of second going to public hearing to discuss this. I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, well, now in a public hearing to propose this tax rate for the city of LaGrange, you heard it read, is anyone here tonight wishing to come in support of the tax rate to be levied? Anyone, support of, anyone here to oppose it tonight? No one? Okay, entertain a motion, we go out of public hearing, back into regular session.
So moved.
Motion made by trade, would there be a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Kinzer. Any further discussion on that? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, you have it before you, council. So we have a motion and a second to adopt this, these tax rates that have been put forth for the council tonight. So we have a motion of second, so any further discussion? No changes from last year. It's lower.
Mayor, just so we're clear on this, 19.1 cents, the new rate for real property down from 19.8, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then the 26.5 cents for personal property remains the same as last year, is that also correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I understand that we lowered that rate because we had reached the maximum 4% because of the property rate increases, is that correct? That's why we lowered it from 19.8 to 19.1?
So you have a computation that you're only allowed a 4%.
So we needed to lower it in order to stay under that 4% threshold?
Correct.
What is the personal property that's, that's at the 26.5? And why is that rate so much higher than the, why is it not the same as the real?
Tangible, tangible personal property are, are items that you can see, feel, and move. So like, for example.
So my suit?
No. Business property. So like for your restaurant, it would be anything that's, that's movable, so.
So the cheese in my refrigerator?
No, not, not consumables.
Okay.
So not consumable.
Well, I don't know, I'm.
No, 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 that's okay.
My count knows, but I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, no, you are correct. So computers, refrigerator, tables, any, you can essentially equate it to whatever can be depreciated is considered tangible property.
Okay.
For tax purposes.
If it can be depreciated, then it's tangible. And why is it higher, why is it at 26.5 versus 19.1? Maybe that's a question for mayor, because I don't think you separate.
That 26.5 has been there for 30 years.
Yeah.
It really has.
I don't know the, I don't know the history of where the rate came from. I only know how to computationally get to it. But like the mayor said, we have not increased it over the existence of the past 20, 20 years.
We, we had, and this is for council, and I think Kenneth had mentioned too, when we, when the council kept the 1% compensation tax, one of the things that was, that Kenneth mentioned is that if we're going to lower a tax, maybe we should lower, look at lowering the property tax. Is that something we want to look at since we're doing pretty well? And we've got, everybody passed a compensation tax. And like I said, Kenneth had brought up lowering the property tax. Is that something we want to look at? Have we budgeted based on this already, mayor? And this, these numbers are there already on the, what we're budgeted for?
Yes.
Okay. My thought is.
And, and, and we did lower it, I mean, .008. So there is some savings there. To what extent, you know, people may think it's significant or not, but it is lower than what it was last year.
The thing too about lowering the tax rate, anytime you, if you do take a lower one, then the next year's calculation is based on the lower rate that you just said. So could, you could get a situation that if you're, if you continue to do that, then you're, you've got a beginning new number as you lower it down. But that, that's all up to the council is if they, they feel like that the services that we're providing, what I try to do, Jason Kinzer, is when people come in to pay their tax bill and it's, you know, 236 bucks or 331, I try to, I try to say, do you feel like you've got your worth of city services out of that tax bill you just paid us? And, and typically they will say yes, because, you know, whether it's grinding up all their limbs that they've got stocked out on the alley, or their streets have been swept, or their roads have been paved. We've done a lot of nice paving this year. They, they seem very appreciative of the, of the taxation that we have presently based on our city services, our, our citywide police protection. And they just feel like that they're getting a pretty good bargain for the amount of tax they pay. That's not to say that taxes can't be lowered, but they feel like they're getting a fair deal on the taxes they pay here in the city, at least they do to me. Now, whether you all choose to, to lower it, that's up to the council. But that's all I can say about what I feel people feel about the city taxes. Now, granted, when you pay your county tax bill, you just about have to take out a loan, you know, sometimes because it is certainly a large, large bill. But there's a lot of taxing districts that are placed on that county bill, thus making it look as big as it is. That's accumulation of all the taxing districts in Oldham County, including the fire department. Kenneth? What do you think about lowering?
Lower anything unless we looked into it, whether it's 1%, 10%, 5%, 20%. I mean, you.
Lower it anymore is my home state exemption, I won't have paying it off.
See, Joe's going to have a party for all of us.
I mean, everybody wants to, you know, pay less taxes. Nobody wants to see it go up. I think in order to lower something, you can't make just a knee-jerk reaction. You've got to look into it and see what you can compensate yourself from what you're lowering and how you're going to overcome that, so.
I, just right off the top of my head, I think it would be, I'm not sure why the 26.5, I know it's been around for a while, but why that's so much more than the 19.1 for the real property? I don't understand why, why the difference there. So my first thought would be maybe making those two equal.
I would say to look into that. It's like if it hasn't been, I wouldn't just lower that right now. I'm not going to make a decision to do that. I mean, that'd be like going into a, you know, going into anything unprepared. So I mean, if you want me to say, oh yeah, let's lower that right now to do that, no, I wouldn't do that. If you want to do that, I would say, why has it not been lowered for 30 years or 40 years? Or, and if you can, then I think that that's a committee or something that we can look into as a whole to how you lower that. I would agree.
You think budget committee?
Budget committee. You know, any committee that, that would have to do with the finances should look into that and see where you can get it. I mean, obviously Cindy or the mayor, or Joe, or Elsie, or Bill, or anybody else. I mean, any other council member that sat on this council before me should have caught that. There's a lot of people up here that have been sitting here for many years that have seen that 26.5%. And, you know, they haven't seen the need to look into it until now.
Shame on them.
Hey, I'd agree, I'd agree. So maybe that's something that everybody didn't look into.
Maybe it should have been done before we get to the point to vote for it.
I think you're exactly right.
City, how tough would it be to take a look at that over the next couple of days and shoot us an email, let us know what that would take?
It's, it's not, it's not a two-day project.
What was, can we look at what was the?
I think this is a next year thing.
From that tax last year? I mean, I can calculate that.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to.
You tell me what the tax was, I can calculate.
I'm going to preface this by the fact that when people's tax bills are due. So September 15th is, is, I believe, when the tax bills go out and people have until October 15th. So they have, by the time we get these in the mail, they're going to have 30 days. This will likely, for me to make a full budget analysis, I won't have it by the end of the week.
I just want to know dollar numbers. So if you can give me the dollar number for what this was for, what the tangible tax that we brought in last year, I can figure out the percentage of 26.5, down to 19.1 and.
So the amount of tangible property that we had last year was 45, 45 million. And that roughly, that amount hasn't changed significantly over the years. And that roughly, that amount hasn't changed significantly over the years either.
Probably Rawlings moving a lot of stuff out of their office buildings, computers and what.
But it, and, and, and to be honest, hold on, I can put this up here. Do you want me to send it to you electronically? And here's the reason why this is not such a simple computation to make.
Okay.
So this is, this is the diagram of the mathematics and the formula that they take you through. It's not just simply taking one number times a percentage rate. So you have to do comparatives and you have to back out less your tangibles and your real property, so it's not just a simple, I've got forty-five million times two percent. I mean, if I'm going to make a, a full budget assessment, I, I'm, I'm not just going to, it, it, this late in the game, I'm not just going to take a number times two percent.
So forty six.
And make a recommendation.
Forty-five million, forty-five million is simply the tangible, the twenty six point five percent tangible tax, that's what that forty-five million number is.
That's a real, that's a real number, a real assessment given through, from the county, yes.
Okay. What's the, what's the property tax?
It's, it's in your packet, so the, it's the very first item on the statement of revenues, so the projected was one point nine.
One point nine?
That's, that's what it, that's what it's on the projected in your packet for revenues, for property tax and personal property tax.
Where did forty-five million come from?
I'm not following that one, but that's the projected in our budget for this, for the year that we're in now.
Forty-five million is the assessed amount.
Oh, the value of all the personal, of the tangible. All the tangible is forty-five million, so if you take forty-five million, twenty-six point five cents per hundred, that's where you come up.
Roughly, yes. So it's about a hundred and twenty thousand.
A hundred and twenty thousand is the total of everything.
For, for tangible.
For tangible, a hundred and twenty thousand. So if we drop it down to the nineteen point one, maybe we go to a hundred thousand. So we're talking twenty grand.
So I would have to go back and look at the statute, so the statute as it relates to personal property, and Heather, you might have to correct me here, whether the statute says that you're allowable to collect as much to, as you did to be equal to last year.
That's a compensating rate.
Yes, but you, you get the compensating rate for tangibles as well, yes. So we can't low, we can't lower the rate that would give us revenue below a hundred and nineteen thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand.
Because?
The statute indicates that we, we can, and I don't say, I don't know if it says we have to.
Oh, okay.
That's where, I don't have the sta, the full language in front of me to, to tell you that, that it is, we can or we have to.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we at least look at making those two the same. Um, I don't understand why there's a difference, I don't understand why nobody asked it before, but it seems like, for one thing, it would simplify it for you, if we make the tangible the same as the real property tax.
They're built, they're built separately, so whether there's two different rates doesn't make a difference to us.
Okay.
In most property tax collectors do not pay, excuse me, do not pay tangible, it's typically those people with businesses that pay the tangible.
That's true. Okay, um, Jason.
Been waiting for years.
Uh.
Been waiting for years.
What do, what, what is it, what is it you're asking for, Jason, at this time?
Um, I would, I'll make a motion that we make the tangible tax the same rate as whatever the, uh, going rate that year is for the, uh, real property tax, which currently is nineteen point one.
Tangible, tangible property is completely a different animal than is someone's real property. Tangible basically, uh, primarily relates to businesses, equipment, you name it, um, probably two point four million dollars worth of property tax that's generated by the city is, comes from real property, which is the homeowners, not businesses primarily, so.
Right.
Um, I just don't see how, you know, unless you're just trying to take care of every business to reduce their taxable, uh, taxable, uh, amount on their equipment and things of that type, that's, that's basically where you're trying to cut the revenue stream of the city is through the, it sounds like to me the business part of taxation, not the homeowners themselves.
Right, because that's who's paying the one percent, uh, compensation tax.
Not necessarily every, not necessarily, Jason, because a homeowner, if they are working in the city of Lagrange, is also paying the compensation tax.
Right.
Potentially.
Right, and the businesses need to up their pay to compensate for that, or pay it straight out or bump up the pay or whatever to come forward. I, I, the other thing is, I don't understand why we're, why there's, why we're being unfair, why one is nineteen point one and the other's twenty-six point five, and we've always done it that way, is not a good enough answer for me, so I, I think we should make them both the same.
I think state government, federal government, they have different taxable rates on everything. You know, if you look at state government, uh, tangible tax, inventory tax, they got taxes for everything as well, so all the taxes are not taxed equally, Jason, you know, property tax, vehicle tax, road taxes, road usage taxes, they all have different numbers that go with them, and nothing in the taxable chart is typically identical to one another, they're, they're set at rates based on the amount of probably that product that there is, and, and that goes to the state level, probably goes to the federal tax tables, and it does to the, down to the city tax levels.
Jason, I understa, I understand you want to do your due diligence when it comes to taxes, but I'm not too sure that this is the time to do it when we're getting ready to vote on it and everything is getting down to the, you know, to the last minute. This is something that should have been done months ago, months ago.
Well, yes, but we're talking about twenty grand. We're not talking about a huge number, making a big impact, it's easy, as Cindy said, to move around a hundred thousand dollars for salary and packages to add an assistant.
I, I think that is.
Give the taxpayers, to be business friendly, to give the businesses, you know, twenty grand back, I, I don't think it's that big a deal. We voted on spending a hundred thousand tonight.
I think, I think furthermore, if you, this could be a, um, more than just a minimal, uh, change to the ordinance, and we're in a second reading, we'd probably have to revert back and re-advertize it again, start again with the first reading, and that again, it would probably take another thirty, forty-five days, based on advertising requirements with the Oldham area, getting it out there. So I'm like Lucy, uh, Jason, I, I hear what you're saying, I think it can be done, but I would ask you to at least put it on the table for the budget committee to take up, and let's try to get this ordinance passed tonight, so Heather can contact Pontum, our software company, starting tomorrow, to get these tax bills printed, it, it's a long process to, and all, everyone has to get together and start stuffing envelopes, but we need these taxes out so people can get them and start receiving their discounts based on the advertisement of this second reading.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I, is there any issue, if we're looking at this next year, for example? I don't know, just kick the can, a lot of people kick the can down the road, of course, but, you know, that being said, if we're looking at this next year, is there any issue when we're voting on the budget, uh, around that same time, that we're dealing with this? Because it always seems like we're dealing with this in September, and there's always no time to do anything, because the bills have to be sent out, is there any reason why we couldn't do this three, four, five months earlier to give us that opportunity to answer questions like Jason's been asking and get information from Cindy in a reasonable time period, so it doesn't feel like we're feet's against the fire, people don't want to vote on it?
The problem with that is, based on setting the tax rate, we don't get our numbers on the PVA, uh, until like, three, four weeks ago or a month ago, okay? So Barbara Winters is trying to get us all of our numbers that have to go into the calculations on the amount of new property, the amount of tangible property, the amount of real property, and all that goes into the calculation that Cindy just showed, so we're always waiting, Jason, to the last minute to get these tax bills out when we get them out. So now, if we want to take, put a tax bill to December, uh, we get, you know, but I think, uh, the fact that what Jason Kinzer brought up, I think those things need to be sent and maybe presented to the budget committee in advance as considerations, and I think that's where we fail, we try to bring them up on the night of instead of trying to get them discussed at the time they should be discussed to be considered.
Well, this is our first chance to discuss it though, uh, first reading, there's not really a, normally a discussion on it, um, so the second reading is the only time to discuss.
That's something for the budget committee to.
But the budget committee wouldn't have, he just said Barbara Winters doesn't get those numbers.
But it would answer some of the questions about where that twenty whatever percent tangibles, uh, comes from, and what it's used for, and how it's calculated, those types of questions is what Cindy could do is take this year's budget and compare the two with, with, with what we vote on, and, or what we vote on, and what it, if it was lower, and then we could see that and how it affects it, but doing it tonight to her.
But, but we just voted to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a salary, and nobody cares where that's coming from.
That's apples and oranges.
No, it's not, it's all the same budget, we're missing twenty grand out of the budget, or we're missing a hundred grand out of the budget, obviously, things can be moved around pretty easily. I, I think it shows good faith to the taxpayers that we're, you know, we're trying to keep things, um, we're running a tight ship, trying to keep things as low on them as we need to.
Can I call for the question?
Well, um, Jason tried to put a motion on the table a moment ago.
There was already a motion in a second.
Right.
And we went in public, and now we're in our comment, so I think you have to vote on that one first.
We have a motion in a second to, to adopt this, uh, tax levy that's been proposed tonight, we have a motion second, so what we will do, we'll do, if there's no further discussion, I always allow discussion, so if there's any further discussion, we can continue to discuss, but she's called for the question, so, um, let's move to a vote, and we'll start with, uh.
I, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think the point that we are kind of doing all this last minute, um, is a valid concern, because every year, we're going to be in this situation, we don't get presented with the numbers until right before the tax bills are due, so I think it is a valid point to look at in the coming budget year, to look at what would the impact be of, um, either reducing the, uh, ad valorem tax that's, that's affecting businesses, or look at the, um, property tax, the real property tax, instead of getting a four percent increase, which is what we're doing, what if we did a three percent increase, what if we did a two percent increase, giving a tax break to our residents in that way? So I agree that right now, right before the tax bills are due, this is a difficult time to make that decision, but I also think that it makes a whole lot of sense to, let's start the coming year with that as an idea for next budget year.
And I think, I think that's where the council members, Laura, whether it's your committee or another committee or another committee, they need to be thinking about what possibly that committee's going to be considering to bring that concern to that committee at that time. If you don't bring it to the budget committee that Jason had a concern about the, the tangible tax, then the budget committee felt, well, that's what it's always been, let's just leave it there, whereas had he come forward, they could have surely considered that and maybe at that time recommended the, the tax break.
Well, and I think Kenneth mentioned it many, many times during, when we passed the compensation tax, he said several times, if we're going to lower a tax, let's lower the property tax, let's lower, let's lower the property tax and, to heck, he didn't say to heck with the workers, but you know what I mean, he said, let's take care of the property tax, so it was mentioned, it was brought up several times, it was brought up, you know, to the whole, to the whole council.
But, but in all fairness, at the time, the big push was on the compensation tax, and there was a lot of time and effort on my part spent on doing what-if scenarios as it relates to the compensation tax, and nothing at that point in time was brought forward related to the property tax, but we absolutely, to your point, Laura, I, based on the numbers that we have this year, we can take this information and make assumptions for next year and absolutely go through that exercise.
It sounds like we need to push the tax, uh, if we can't get the numbers from Barbara Winters until right now, basically, then it sounds like we need, we need to move this back. We need to have time to look at this and read it, see where we're at, and see what we're going to get, see what the tax numbers look like, um, you know, this, you know, the national level's the same way, you know, these congressmen have this seven hundred page bills that nobody can read, and they, you know, they, or seven thousand page bills that nobody can read, and they pass them the next day, so we, we need to have time to look at it, see what we got, and I think the only way to do that, unless I'm wrong, unless you guys have another idea, is to move that tax bill back.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, we've got to move on, Laura, uh, roll call vote, please, Heather, start with Laura, please.
Laura Taylor?
Yes.
Trey Kammer?
Yes.
Kenneth Kau?
Yes.
Joe Davenport?
Yes.
Jason Taylor?
Yes.
Jason Kinzer?
Yes, with the, with the understanding that we should look at moving the dates and things and taking a look earlier next year.
Yes.
Ken Matošević?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all for that good discussion, and we will, uh, commit to looking at that next year and any other matters concerning those money matters as well, Jason, okay? Yes, sir, thank you, sir. Okay, all right, um, that's a second reading there, we're going to move to seventeen, Director's Report, uh, hello Katie, oh, it's Cory.
I'll be brief.
Yes, sir, I know you'd be brief, because you want, you want to get home.
Dragging me out this late.
I know, sorry, buddy.
All right, little updates on projects, uh, paving, we've been doing a lot of, uh, we did mill and pave on Glen Eagles, uh, to the tune of two hundred and seven thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and ten cents, uh, Eden Parkway was resurfaced, uh, milling, full milling pave, that was a hundred ninety-five, five thirty-seven, eighty-eight, which fifty percent of that will come from Oldham County Government, uh, that's, uh, includes striping. Uh, we've been working on staying ahead of paving schedule, you know, repairing curves, catch basins in Majestic Woods, Anita Springs, uh, which are upcoming, upcoming paving, of course, Four Street, Josh mentioned earlier, they'll be, uh, milling Tuesday, paving Wednesday, so it'll be a pretty quick project, but a lot of it, they just had to do, uh, about a five inch mill, base surface, the whole shebang, um, of course, we're going to do Majestic Woods with Anchor McMakeen, uh, Water Works, we might have a little more stuff over there to do yet, I don't know if we're going to be able to keep ahead of that, so we might push that off. Um, we have received our bucket truck Saturday, I actually considered they were going to come this week, but he came oddly enough on Saturday, uh, we got one truck on order, one still in the shop, and we have the tractor on order, so moving some equipment around. So moving some equipment around, finally getting some things going. I do have a written determination that I've handed, sent out before the meeting to surplus our old bucket truck. Do you want me to read that? Which is a written determination for disposal of personal property. Whereas Kentucky Revised Statute KRS eighty-two dot zero eight three states in pertinent part, one, a city may sell or otherwise dispose of any of its real or personal property. Two, before selling or otherwise disposing of any real or personal property, the city shall make a written determination setting forth and fully describing, A, the real or personal property, B, its intended use at the time of acquisition, C, the reason why it is in the public's interest to dispose of it, and D, the method of disposition to be used. Therefore, the following written determination is hereby set forth and made. A, the city owns certain partial property, specifically a two thousand white GMC truck in number one GBM seven H one C seven Y J five two two seven eight four. B, the city intended to use this truck as a public works vehicle at the time of acquisition, and that intended use was fulfilled. C, it is in the public interest to dispose of this property, the cost of continued storage exceeds the value to the city. And D, the vehicle will be sold at public auction. This written determination is hereby adopted and true by the legislative body of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky. Motion.
Motion by Jason Kinzer. Second by who?
Trey.
Trey? I was in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Want to pose? Okay, Heather, everybody just say yes here, okay?
Good deal. We likely will sell that on gov deals because it's no cost out of our pocket. They pass on the percentage to the consumer. Personnel, we have one vacancy. Our newest guy, he actually left and he's moving to North Dakota. So I actually have had four interviews so far and I have two to go tomorrow, so we're going to try to fill that spot. And we're likely going to hold out, but Art Brush has fully retired from the city. He left, got to come back. Now he's had fugal issues, but he's, he's leaving permanently. So I just kind of want to publicly thank him for his service to the city. He stuck with me for ten years and you, like the, the song goes, you don't know what you got till it's gone. It's, he's a hard dude to replace. He worked seven days a week without question and had to worry about it on cruise control. Now, now it's, he's, it's tough to fill those, that spot, so we've got some people interested looking to, probably just going to fill it this spring. We're going to continue out, just doing it in the department. Keep it going. Any questions?
Oh, sir, I've been talking about this. I just think it's something that we need a connectivity, but do we have the ability to get a sidewalk from Chestnut Avenue to Woodland Lakes?
We do. And actually, speaking of that, I, we've talked to both property owners. I just talked to the last guy. We're trying to work out the house on the courts. Art Henson is his name. He's perfectly fine with the sidewalk, but he has the, the garage, what used to be a garage, outside of his house. So he wants to block it up, fill it in, so we're trying to work the details to get it worked out to get that part done, so.
Do we need an, do we need a engineer study or do we, or can you just do it with your site?
One of those, if we can get, come to an agreement with him, I feel like it's not as big a deal as we thought originally because they're going to allow us on, between Stanford and the alley, as far as we need to in their yard, so, which is great because we thought we're going to...
Well, we need a barrier, barrier or something there to keep bicyclists from getting onto the highway right through there.
It's close, it's very close. We're going to back it up as far as we possibly can, so yeah, we'll, we'll be close. We'll probably start on that this spring, get that moving. There's several other spots we're kind of focused on.
What about Jaeger Avenue? We still have that on plants down to the library?
Jaeger, East and West, Crystal. Dial that in up there. It's kind of our next, next step. So, but we do have a couple other big projects. We've got co-replacement or repair on East Crystal back at the, actually that outflow from Woodland Lake Dam, it's failing, so we've got to address that.
All righty. Thank you Cory, very much for standing with us tonight. Sorry it's running late. Steve Mahoney, LaGrange Public, LaGrange Parks Director.
Well, I tried to turn the AC down really low to freeze us out. We're at three hours and thirty-seven minutes, it didn't work. So anyway, I'll try again next week, right? So glad to be here tonight, just an update on some of the things we're doing. I didn't take a picture of it, but the, I heard someone talking about Amazon earlier. I love Amazon. For example, we lost a, broke a blade on one mower and then five men's layer broke a belt on the other mower and we were instantly out and I probably could have gone up the street and spent twenty more per item and got them the next day on Amazon and then bought backups for those so we would be better prepared. So definitely an Amazon person, that is me. Trey Museum, we had fifteen hundred dollars in our budget to get two picnic tables. If I would have used our specialty catalogs, they would have been about a thousand apiece. I was able to get two at the colors they requested for fourteen ninety-eight, Amazon. So that's one of the Amazon purchases. So talk about some of the things we've been working on there. The haircut, folks, great job. Latasha worked really behind the scenes and a lot of council folks were here. Over seventy haircuts that day and a lot of smiles, snow cones, all that jazz. So it was a good time there for the back to school event. Hope we continue that every year. The bridge inspections, I will present that to the Parks Committee to report from there. As they mentioned briefly, our bridges have great bones, they just need a little lovin' on them. So we plan on going in this fall and pressure washing, restaining. One of the bridges, the screws just aren't long enough. They should have been two and a half inch or something, they were only two inch screws. But the, the gentleman then inspected him, is a bridge fanatic, and he loved them. So hey, we'll clean those up and get those cleaned up and I'll show you the full report next week. One of the projects we've been working on is cleaning, gosh, this is going to be the death of me, all the different mulches and rocks up there at Springs Park. I bet we spend, I could easily spend ten hours a week, man-hours, blowing all that bike with blowers and it's just a crazy design. So one of the things the guys and I did, we put some fencing around the trees and the rocks. We put some glue on the rocks, hold in, and then we found some decorative fencing. It's actually sturdier than the fencing we have out by the train tracks. Found them on Amazon and did a great job. So we did it, the, all seven trees and Public Works, Amber's did a great job getting our trees. I don't think our trees have been lit up for about, we traced it back on cameras to about eight months. So we replaced all the transformers, so now our electric and our trees are protected and the fencing is up. And I think we did it all for about twenty-five hundred bucks, so we did all that in-house, which is great. Working on signage I found when we were cleaning our shop. You see the Springs Park signage? We actually have signage that matches that was just never hung. So that's an old sign at Wilburn. Mundo and Walsh all have old signage and we have new signage with the same guidelines at each sign, so as the winter approaches us, we will replace our signage. Cameras, all the cameras in Spring Parks are set up. We have eighteen cameras full, that's just some screenshots of some of them. So it's a great little system and it's an expensive system, but that was completed and a lady actually left her cell phone that started the skate park mural. She left it behind and I was able to pull it up on the camera earlier today and it was actually turned in the police station by some kiddos, so appreciate those kiddos. So Springs Park cameras are good to go. Talking about our website, been updating our website, putting, making sure every property that we have is equally represented on there. Equally took a bunch of photos, trying to update that, et cetera, on our website. I want to talk a little bit about going back to the cameras. Our properties at Wilburn, Walsh, and Mundo, there's not much protection there at all. There's like five different camera systems from various generations of whoever hung them that are just not active. So I worked with Heather last week. We're going to use the same system that we use our bus monitor surveillance on through Verizon. We've ordered three of those and then rather than outsourcing the camera, the guys and I are going to put the cameras in ourself. And actually, the last set was delivered today from Amazon. But we did a lot of research, I do a lot of wiring stuff on the side on my own, and I think we can do a lot better job for about twenty-eight hundred bucks than what it would cost to have someone else come in there and it would all be web-based, so we hopefully will have that up by the end of the month. The Wilburn Park does have automatic timers on the doors that shut, but they stay open all day. And we've had a can of paint and some other stuff happen there last week, so we have shut those down until we can get our cameras up. So when it's all said and done, we will install between the three locations twenty cameras and we will do that all in-house, so we'll have our eyes on all those properties. And then last but not least, I want to shout out the line dancing group. Whitney, the lady there in the front, she, she's celebrating her one-year anniversary of doing that, so I want to talk her into coming up here and do it on Thursday. I happened to film them at one of the trackside tunes and she said her attendance has tripled. So I mean, they're pushing seventy folks up here on a Thursday sometimes to line dance. Folks like that and our yoga folks and our volleyball folks, they pay a business license and they come in and they, I know, business license or a topic at one time, a couple weeks ago, but they actually pay their license to come in there and host these class and I think she charges five bucks for a class or something like that, but it's a great activity. So Whitney, congratulations on your year anniversary with the line dancing and we've already talked about doing some winter programming with our kids to do a little kids line dancing camp, camp over winter break. So that's all I have. Any questions?
You wear me out.
Got to keep up with you. Oh, last thing I have, I will say this, we start this today, only one person showed up. We've, I've tried to streamline our events, so pickleball happens the same, it's very routine. I think that's just easy for people to remember, so we started it today. Family did show up today and it's more so for anybody that's under seventeen that's going to have their adults with them and stay-at-home school, stay-at-home parents for younger kids. I know at Springs Park, we're getting a lot of younger kids during the day now that kids are back to school and I know the weather will change and I told them that, hey, can we do something up here on Tuesdays for them during the day? And they seem really excited. So homeschool kids, whatnot, the gym will be available for them every Tuesday from ten to one, just an opportunity for parents and that's all I have.
What's your fall programming look like? We going to have any coed volleyball leagues or anything like that this, this fall or this winter or no?
Well, the only person I haven't met is our volleyball person. She's here on Sunday night and I plan to get in and kind of see what we can do. I know I've talked to some guys about doing a adult basketball league. I know we need to, I have in my budget some money for some referees and I want to make sure we really streamline that because I know how that can get out of control with egos and stuff. So I want to make sure we are very professional with that. My son is athletic director down at Spalding University. I want to rely on some of the men's basketball players to potentially come do some camps over the winter break and yeah, we'll get there. Skate night will start up in October, November, December, January, February, and March. That will return once a month.
Okay. Steve, anyone have any questions or comments for Steve?
You wear me out.
Do I?
Yeah.
Thank you for your compliment. Yes. Thank you.
And, and your two, your two assistants too, they're, they're great guys.
Yes, I should say that. Fully staffed, Duel and Claymar, both local boys, products of Oldham County High School of various generations, I guess, and just great, great. Blessed to have them and you know, we're kind of, appreciate Cory, just a shout out again, we're getting a lot of hand-me-downs from Public Works, but we're kind of building. We're in our infancy and we're just, you know, going to make it professional and Cory, appreciate your support, but got a couple good guys, we're doing some good stuff. Just, we just, we're trying to get there, there's a lot to do.
You got, those two guys are, are great. They're really good.
They are. There was an accident, the chief. You want to say that? Because I, I don't know if they're watching or not, why would they be up this late? We had an accident down at Skate Park and it was a Hispanic family and Claymar is bilingual, so if you don't mind speaking that, how could they...
It was early one morning, about eight-thirty, EMS was dispatched to the lower end of Springs Park on a child injury. Came out as an ankle injury, so you're thinking, oh, maybe a sprain, something to that degree. And I pull in as the EMS trucks getting there and the Parks, Parks guys already had the injured kid in the front seat and they're dialoguing with the mother. The father didn't speak any English and of course, we're helping EMS and they were calming him down. They went to cut his pants away and it was an open fracture with his bone exposed over his foot. How that child was being calm, I don't know, but he did very well, but I think it had a whole lot to do with your guys there early on. They were there just as almost it happened, but they did a great job. I was very impressed with their care and their dealing with people and helping EMS and they, the child ended up going downtown Cozair or Children's, important children's now, but they handled seeing an injury like that quite well.
Yeah, they called me and I went the other way.
Probably, probably what happened, you all, there's a fellow work, he, one of them that works at Public works is Duel, Shuddy.
Shudy.
Shudy, Shuddy, Shudy. And probably what this kid, how he relaxes, Duel started laughing, okay? And if you ever hear Duel laugh, you're going, you're not even going to forget what's hurting you, you're just going to laugh with him. So he's got the most unique and crazy laugh anybody ever seen, but he laughs all the time. So anyway, okay, thank you, Steve. All right, we're going on into eighteen, Parks and Recreation, Trey Kammer.
Thanks, Mayor. We met on, on the fourteenth. The primary discussion was on the golf course. We discussed golf course equipment improvements related to the budget. We did go over the revenue section and added new line items to that budget. We discussed the year-over-year management contracts. We discussed inventory. Just wanted to take inventory for insurance purposes and that's kind of the gist of it, so I will, in the interest of time, hand it off to the next committee person.
Jason Kinzer.
There we go.
Economics.
We, we punted this month, so our next meeting is Thursday, September eleventh.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Going on to ordinance and code enforcement, Laura Taylor.
In ordinance committee, we discussed the ethics and parking ordinances, got those finalized for first readings for this meeting. We are continuing to work on the sign ordinance. We're just getting, getting ready to discuss the city job description discrepancies for the code enforcement officer. There's conflicting job descriptions. And we also, in the future, we'll be discussing historic district guidelines, but we've got a lot to, to go over, so that's a little bit down the road.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. And personnel and insurance, Lucy Ricketts.
Well, we're, we were about a, a month behind, so we met early in the month and then we didn't meet this, end of this month. So what we were working on was the insurance and, and discussing those and getting information on it.
Okay. Thank you, Lucy. Okay, we have three appointments tonight. Been able to locate and speak with three different folks on these appointments. Nineteen is a new appointment of Sarah Los to the Ethics Commission to finish out Tommy Gown's term expiring on one, one twenty-seven. So she had just served through his expiration date. I met Sarah on Main Street a week or two ago. She's a volunteer director at Baptist Health LaGrange, very nice lady who lives in Eagles Landing Patio Homes. And if you saw her bio resume, I think she's certainly qualified, so I'd like to make that appointment of Sarah Los. Motion made by Trey.
Second.
Second by Lucy.
Lucy.
Need for a discussion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? Item twenty, you know, most of you, I'm sure know Andrea Mancini, Mancini, new appointment to the Tourism Board for a two-year term, nine one twenty-five, nine one twenty-seven. You saw her letter of interest in your packets, so everyone knows Andrea. She's actually the founding person to introduce the tourism ordinance to our city, which has proven to be a good thing, I believe, for our city, so who would like to make that motion?
Hey, Mayor, I have a question on that. Which, because I know the, on the Tourism Board, there's, you got to have this many people from this group and this many people from this group, so I'm just curious which group she's, is she one of the mayor's appointments or is she a, a chamber or hotels or? I know she's good, I just didn't know which one she was filling in.
She is replacing Taryn, who is a mayor's choice.
Gotcha.
Taryn was, she's served two terms and Taryn said, if you can find somebody to take my place, I'd appreciate it. If not, I'll stay. So anyway, it's a mayor's choice, so Andrea would be the mayor's choice.
Okay. Okay, did we have a motion? Did, we have a motion and a, we have a motion and a second. Second by Laura. Motion made by Trey. All is in favor of the motion, let me know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? 21, new appointment of Luke Tom, Tom Perry to the Board of Adjustments to finish out Wayne Morgan's term until 2/127. Wayne, um, sadly passed away a few months ago and Luke lives at the corner over here at Main and 4th Street at the corner and he's agreed to serve out Wayne's term and I think Luke would be a good board member. So, anyone willing to make that motion to appoint Luke? Motion made by Trey, second by Kenneth Powell. Any further discussion on this appointment? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Item 22, presentation proclamation for Brian Ray. As most of the community knows, um, Brian Ray, um, unfortunately, uh, lost his life a couple weeks ago in a sad, sad night for the community and, um, had, um, a couple council members, maybe one, two, I don't recall, asked that if something that we could do in remembrance of Brian and, um, they asked that a proclamation be, uh, presented to his wife. Understands wife can't be here tonight, she's just not ready to come into crowds or anything otherwise and of course, that's understandable, so we have a proclamation here tonight, so I'd like to give the proclamation to Jason Taylor.
Actually Laura, you can give it to Laura. She, she was going to give it to Michelle tomorrow, yes. Thank you.
Well, yeah, but I want someone, one of y'all to read it and recognize it.
You want me to read it, Laura?
You can read it.
Okay.
So, go ahead, either of you.
I'll read that for the record. City of LaGrange Office of the Mayor and City Council, whereas Brian Ray was a resident of LaGrange, Kentucky with his wife, Michelle Ray. And whereas Brian purchased and restored a historic home on Main Street in LaGrange, Kentucky, adding beautification to our local Main Street. And whereas Brian was outspoken, was an outspoken advocate for individual rights, was an active participant at city council meetings and regularly contributed to discussions in our local government. And whereas Brian was an extremely skilled and accomplished entertainer who had amassed a tremendous following of people in our community who enjoyed coming out to our local businesses on a regular basis to relax, unwind and enjoy karaoke. And whereas through his music and outreach, Brian brought new people out and helped the tourism in LaGrange. And whereas Brian touched many lives with his friendship, exhibiting the kindness that LaGrange epitomizes. Mayor, do you want to read the next part since, has your name on it? Okay. Now therefore, I, John W. Black, Mayor of LaGrange, hereby declare March 20th, 2026, which is actually Brian's birthday, as Brian Ray Day in LaGrange, Kentucky, in his memory and in honor of Brian's outstanding contributions to our community, we extend our sincere gratitude and appreciation to Brian's family for the moments we were privileged to share in his life. And witness thereof, I have heretofore set in my hand the second day of September 2025. Signed by Mayor John Black. Also, uh, I have signed as well, Jason Kinzer and Laura Taylor, also council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you Jason. Let's move on to item 23. Well, we already done 23, let's go to 24. Public comment. Anyone here for a lasting public comment time tonight? No? Okay. Uh, let's talk about any open discussion related to any old or new business that any council member would like to bring up. Any like, anyone have anything you'd like to bring attention to tonight, so the next committee meeting might have advanced notice of what your thoughts are? Anyone?
I'm just going to make a comment, um, that there's a prominent individual in the community that's having a procedure tomorrow and, um, could use your prayer, so I'll just leave it at that.
You want to name that person?
I don't think they want to be named, they're pretty private, even though they're definitely out in the community a lot and well-known, but I don't think they, I don't think they want it to be known.
All right, well, let's just, um, remember that, remember that prominent person tonight through prayer. Thank you Trey. Any, anyone else have anything that you'd like to mention to the public and/or the council? All right, uh, any announcements? No further announcements from anyone? Next city council will be on Monday, October 6, 2025. And once again, I want to thank the city council for sitting here tonight and your concerns for our city. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Trey.
I'll second.
Second by Laura Taylor. All is in favor of the motion, let me know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.